The August tenth, two thousand and twenty-one city council work session and call this meeting to order in that it's not a council meeting, we won't take role for our counselors. And so we'll just go right into the reason that we're having our work session this evening is to have a presentation from a group from the Eugene area Kahoots. Crisis assistance helping out on the streets. And so I'll call on Captain Tim Simons to introduce the topic tonight. And we recognize we've got two individuals from the Salem area, one from the police department and one from another organization, both Ron and Tim, and we welcome them also. But we'll turn it over to Captain Simons to introduce those individuals. So Captain, we'll turn it over to you.
Tim, do you mind if I, Mayor, do you mind if I, if I kind of preface this?
Absolutely.
I'll go ahead and kind of kick it off and then I think Tim will do the PowerPoint real quick about McMinnville and then we'll have Ron and and Tim from the Eugene area, both Eugene PD and Kahoots here. But thank you for the time tonight. This is a session that we've been anticipating. I know we had to cancel our June meeting for the specific topic, but it's a topic that we've been discussing for, as a counsel, I think, you know, for roughly a year. Mr. Tauri and I have been in discussions for a number of months about bringing this issue forward. And I'm, I think if you would look at the gallery, I think we shared this, this meeting, this topic tonight with our Lipsec and other partners in Yamhill County, Greater McMinnville area, in hopes of raising awareness and, you know, at least spurring some discussion and conversation moving forward after this presentation. But real quickly, Kahoots, as Mr., the mayor had mentioned, it's been a relationship that Eugene and Whitebird Clinic have had for roughly thirty years and they'll, they'll be able to provide some historical context for it. But this has been an extremely successful program that's worked well and it's actually got national traction in, in steering non-police calls out of, from the mental health area arena to people that are more adequately prepared and quite frankly, have the capacity to deal with this, this issue in, in a better, probably more suited fashion. So both Tim and Lieutenant Tensith are here. They've done a tremendous about, like I said, publicity. You've seen probably some stuff that's happening over in the White House and the Capitol area. And I believe they may have even presented to the Senate or the House the program because I know Senator Wyden's office has been championing this program. But so the, the format will be essentially Captain Simon's going to go quickly over our, our, our statistics through a PowerPoint and we'll turn it over to Lieutenant and Tim to discuss the program. But more along the lines, hopefully this is going to spur a discussion, a larger discussion about where the council as a policy may, you know, hope to go someday. But with that being said, I'll, I'll turn it over to Captain Simons. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief Scales. I'll, I'll try to work through this PowerPoint fairly quickly. There's about six or seven slides that we'll be going through. It's just some basic information for the council to, to see and understand kind of the calls for service that the police department responds to, the numbers that we've been able to quantify, and then also the resources that we have and the training that we have been able to undertake at this point. So hopefully I'll be able to advance this. Just a second. So the remote's not working, unfortunately. Claudia's going to help me out by hitting the spacebar. So go ahead and hit the next slide, please. So these are the calls for service that we responded to, two thousand and nineteen, twenty, and through July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, that are mental health and mental violent calls that were classified through YCOM or dispatch center when they are received. As you can see, the numbers continue to increase. This year, two thousand and twenty-one, we're pretty close to the numbers that we amassed in two thousand and twenty for the mental, that are classified as mental. And then the mental violent are also getting fairly, fairly close to the, the total calendar year number for two thousand and twenty. Could you hit the next slide, please? And this is to give you a snapshot, a review of what happens when, when we get dispatched to a, a mental health related call. We do have services through Health and Human Services where we have community outreach specialists or COS workers that are clinicians that come out on the scene and assist the officers in working through whatever the problem or issue are, is. In two thousand and nineteen, we had a hundred and forty-nine instances where COS responded. In two thousand and twenty, there were two hundred and fifty-eight. And current year, two thousand and twenty-one, we have a hundred and eighty-six. So I think we're going to far surpass two thousand and twenty's numbers as well. Would you hit the next slide, please? Just for some informational purposes, for the training that the DPSST Academy, Basic Academy does in relation to the curriculum that they provide for behavioral health in the sixth week, sixteen-week Basic Academy, there's twenty-six hours of behavioral health specific curriculum that they touch on. Some of those things are awareness units, scenarios, legal considerations, de-escalations, veterans awareness, and then some other scenarios that, that they do as well. Do you do the next slide, please? Over the last four years, three years, three full years at this point, we've been contract, or we've been combining with, partnering with Yamhill County Health and Human Services, Yamhill County Sheriff's Office, Newburgh Dundee Police Department to conduct a forty-hour crisis intervention training. We've completed three of those forty-hour trainings. They've been region-wide, so there've been law enforcement and firefighters, EMS, campus public safety that have attended those trainings. And part of those trainings are interacting with people who have experienced some sort of mental health-related crisis in their lifetime. Could you do the next slide, please? This is just a, an overview of the forty hours that we conduct during that training. And the forty hours is, is dictated by the state as far as what you, what you must cover and then what you have to cover as far as electives are concerned. So as you can see there, there's a number of different things that are covered in the required training, the de-escalation strategies and techniques, medications, an overview of the crisis intervention team, the civil liability for law enforcement officers, overview of the mental health disorders and substance and co-occurring disorders. Some of the electives that we, that we utilize is through the, the trauma and survivors cycle, the lived experiences where people get to come in and speak to their experiences that they've, they've had personally. And then we also go through active listening and a hearing voices section of the training where it basically masks what, what a person feels like when they're, they're hearing voices in their head and how, how difficult it is to be able to differentiate between what's real and what's not real. Next slide, please. Currently, we have seven CIT certified or trained officers and we are projecting to have an additional four in two thousand and twenty-one. We are, are planning to hold a Yamhill County only CIT training in October, which will include the three large agencies in Yamhill County, McMinnville, Yamhill County, and Newburgh Dundee, and then open it up also to fire EMS and campus public safety in the Yamhill County area. And that's what I have as far as the PowerPoint is concerned. Chief Scales, do you, are you ready for me to pass it off to Mr. Black and Lieutenant Tensith then?
Yes, let's, let's get both Lieutenant and Tim introduced and hopefully they can provide an overview, kind of the historical perspective behind it, some of their trials and tribulations, I guess, for lack of a better term, and what their, what their program looks like on a day-to-day basis. So yes, without further ado, I will be quiet and turn it over to you, Tim.
Well, thanks to all for, you know, the opportunity to really talk about what we do down here in Eugene and this, this partnership that we have with the Eugene Police Department. In order to really kind of understand how we got to the point where we, Whitebird Clinic and the Eugene Police Department were able to develop this partnership in the first place, it takes a very brief history lesson, going back to nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen seventy, when Whitebird Clinic first got started as a free clinic in, in the Eugene area. The, the objective of our founding was really to respond to the level of need that was emerging in our community. You know, being on the IFR corridor, literally halfway between San Francisco and Canada, you know, we, and it's no surprise, right? Eugene saw its own impacts from the Summer of Love and that counterculture upheaval created a lot of need in our community. As soon as we started to operate a clinic with a crisis line, we became aware of situations that really required some sort of a community-based crisis response in order to really achieve resolution. And so we started to send out volunteers who would take calls from our crisis line and go and try to respond in the community. While that was going on, Whitebird Clinic was also really building up its other resources over the years, you know, developing a better facility, increasing the offerings that we had, and started to become a location that law enforcement would, would bring people on occasion or refer to us. You know, we would receive a lot of referrals from other public safety resources, really recognizing that both because of actual proximity to other resources in town, that we might have a better opportunity to serve somebody than taking them to the hospital, but also just understanding the needs of, of our community. We were able to really demonstrate how we could have a role to play in reducing hospitalizations and providing substance abuse treatment rather than jail. And, and that ability to really serve our community and our willingness to partner with city and county leaders was what really opened up the doors for a community policing grant nineteen eighty-eight and eighty-nine. That grant was split up, and Ron, you can correct me if I get off course here, but it's my understanding that half of that funding went to more traditional community policing initiatives, you know, some foot patrol officers that are focused on downtown and the parks where we were seeing a lot of the activity that they wanted to address with this grant. The other half of it went to start the Kahoots response as a formalized version of the mobile crisis services we were already offering. The big difference was that we were going to guarantee, be guaranteed to have a medic on each of our response teams and that we were utilizing the public safety communication system. So that meant that rather than calling the crisis line, folks now called public safety non-emergency and that our calls for service were being dispatched on the same frequencies as patrol. And that really allowed us to start to come in and divert some of these calls for, you know, from law enforcement, you know, as, as Chief Scales mentioned, you know, really these non-police responses that law enforcement was other, otherwise obligated to, to handle. We started off really small, you know, Tuesday through Saturday, four P M. to midnight. And at each juncture where we have followed through and facilitated an expansion of our services, that's always been informed by, you know, community input and our partners in public safety really helping us to identify and quantify where those needs are outside of service hours. So when I got hired for, with the program in two thousand and ten, that was to train up for an expansion in two thousand and eleven. That was moving us to eighteen service hours a day from twelve. And the service hours that we picked, really looking at when we were going to be overlapping our shifts, was really informed by dispatch letting us know, yeah, this is when we have the most responses coming in. This is when there's the most demand for your services. We've always maintained that staffing model of a crisis worker and an EMT throughout our work. It's been only about six or seven years that we have been serving the community of Springfield in addition to the city of Eugene. And it's only been the last five years or so that we've been able to move to a twenty-four seven service. Rather than trying to list all the different situations that we respond to with Kahoots, it's, it's fair to say that Kahoots teams are out there to respond to non-criminal calls for service that are generally oriented around mental health, substance use and abuse, homelessness and poverty. A lot of the situations that we're responding to are crises that have escalated stemming from a lack of resources. And so we find ourselves in a position where we're doing a lot of basic needs provision and we're working to help folks get connected to a shower or shelter. But only sixty percent of the patient population that we serve identifies as unhoused. And so that means that there is a lot of prevention work that we're doing, a lot of, a lot of responses that happen in how, in homes. And so our responders really need to be able to expect, you know, anything from a multimillion-dollar house to a, you know, a mud puddle in an alleyway for the venues for our venture interventions over the course of a shift. Looking at just our responses within the city of Eugene, in two thousand and nineteen, there were a hundred and five thousand calls that were generated by the public for the public safety system. Kahoots teams were involved in eighteen thousand of those responses and we facilitated fifteen thousand of those without police, fire, EMS resources. Thirteen thousand of those calls for service would have required patrol, fire or EMS personnel to respond if Kahoots teams hadn't been available. And we had a police cover request rate of three hundred and eleven times out of those, you know, fifteen thousand calls that we responded to without other resources. EPD's on estimate puts our arrest diversion rate at about five to eight percent. We've seen through past outreach initiatives in partnership with Eugene Police that there's a recidivism rate for, for that population of around fourteen to twenty percent. And that's based specifically on some really, you know, targeted outreach that we were doing there. When it comes to our impact on the hospital system and the EMS side of things, it's, it's not as simple as looking at our cover requests, but what we see is that there's a cost savings by reduced ambulance rides, fewer ER visits, there's a cost savings to the community of over fourteen million dollars a year. Four million of that is cost savings directly to Medicaid in our community. Trying to be brief, really kind of give you the highlights so that we have some room to really kind of dive into questions and dialogue here. You know, I think the other thing that's really important to recognize is that the Kahoots response, you know, our successes in the community are entirely predicated on our partnerships. There, there is a tendency for community members to really make this assumption that when the Kahoots van shows up, everything's fixed because the van got there. When in actuality, maybe the resolution that a Kahoots team was able to achieve with somebody is because we have a really good relationship with the shelter system or that we are able to make a really effective referral to the right area of mental health services in our community, or we just focus on addressing the basic needs. And our ability to get folks connected to all those services really requires that those services also receive support, that they are also accessible and that, you know, again, we have a good working relationship with them. We have a really collaborative relationship with patrol, you know, not just with the Eugene Police Department, but Springfield Police Department, Main County Sheriff's as well to really respond to the needs throughout our service area here. And I'll let Lieutenant Tensith talk about kind of the Eugene Police side of the business operations. But, you know, throughout my experience, the last eleven years that I've been with the organization, whenever we have, have had a hurdle to overcome, you know, it's, it's, it's been a really collaborative relationship. We've been able to really find our common ground and really work together to serve the community. As, as we have had the spotlight shone on us over the last year or so, we have had some opportunities to do outreach and start to support other communities. Most notably, we did a lot of work to support the Portland Street response as it got ready to go into its pilot phase. We were part of the, the group that worked to bring the Denver Star response to fruition. We've also supported programming Olympia, Washington, San Francisco, Rochester and New York City and New York State, and are actively consulting with several different communities throughout North America right now as well. I'm sure there's a lot more that we could touch on and we'll come, you know, we'll get to some of those questions. I think maybe the last thing I would mention is that over the thirty-two years that we've been providing the service, we've never had a serious staff injury as a result of patient contact. You know, there are scuffles, folks do get shoved around a little bit, but when it comes to, you know, really extreme severe violence, we haven't encountered any of those situations in our responses. And Lieutenant Tensith, I'll let you speak to the PD side of things.
Go ahead, Ron.
All right. I think I've got the mute figured out. I assume you can hear me?
Yes.
All right. Awesome. Well, Tim, it's good to see you again. We worked many years together in the program. He was in operations management before he moved to his current assignment and we always had a really good working relationship. I think he, he really did hit the nail on the head is, you know, it's the collaborative effort between public safety and the Kahoots teams. One thing that we've, we've learned over the last couple of years talking with communities all over the U.S. and Canada is that one of the main reasons for success is something that pretty much every community should be considering if they're going to be developing a system like this, is that what are the other units or what are the other basic needs in the community? So do you have a place for shelter? Do you have a sobering center? Do you have treatment? The Kahoots team stands on the successes of those organizations in our community and that's the reason it's successful. For, for example, Olympia, Washington didn't have the sobering center. So they, they were missing that component in their community and ended up coming up with a solution for it. But without that, you know, you don't have a resource to send people through. And I would say that is police have, over the last year, year and a half, looked to the appropriateness of mental health or a place response to both homelessness and also mental health, non-violent mental health. You know, are we pivoting to a more appropriate response that's better suited for this type of engagement? And that's what I think our Kahoots partnership has, has brought to us. I've been here for twenty-four years. It's always been a thing, so I don't know otherwise than to have this partnership here as a police officer for many years and then, of course, in, in management. So, you know, a lot of, one of the questions that we get a lot of times is, hey, when you start this, how did you do it? And all I can say is that it's always been a thing. But, you know, that's one of the things that, that many communities are struggling with is how are they going to get along, how's this all going to work? And, and I think that you do find a way to make it work. It's a beneficial relationship and, and as you bring it, you know, into culture, it becomes quickly solidified and is, is successful very quickly. I would like to just talk real briefly about some of the responses. The one, I think truly one of the reasons that we haven't experienced any significant, you know, injuries with our Kahoots team is our public safety entry point, our PSAP here in town, does a very good job of screening calls for indicators of violence. And if there is a concern of violence, we're sending officers to make sure that our Kahoots partners have a safe working environment. So we go to about two thousand of the, oh, thirteen, fourteen thousand calls that Kahoots responds to, it actually arrived at, about two thousand of them were a joint response. Either we're asking for Kahoots, they're asking for us, or, and that's a much lower number. It's very much in culture for our agency to identify a component of a, of a police call for service or a fire call for service that's pretty evident that it would be suited for a Kahoots response, but we just need to stay the light. So officers or fire is, is getting out, assessing if, if true, then they're calling in Kahoots right away and they're out, a quick warm handoff and they're on to the next call for service. And I know most police agencies are, are struggling with staffing and call load and things of that nature. You know, recently at eight or nine o'clock at night, we had fifty calls for service holding with, and that's a lot. So, you know, this is a way to, to help us pivot out of some of these low acuity type calls that are better served with, with a different response. One of the other things that I say often about our Kahoots teams is they are a gateway to community resources that police and fire are not. We don't refer people to treatment. We don't refer people to shelter. We don't, any of that basic needs stuff that Tim was talking about is not in the traditional service profile for you, for police and fire. So this is the way that a lot of people get, get gateways into, into some type of service. Speaking to the medic and the counselor, sometimes there can be mental health issues that manifest themselves as physical issues or like diabetes or as opposed to alcohol being under the influence. And so that really kind of helps that situation. We also do minor wound care that is far removed from the ambulance service that, that we provide also, but is a way to also have counseling, interaction with a lot of people at that level also. Those are the, kind of the high points. This is a very popular program in our, in our department, a lot of supporters. And they, I guess the last thing I'll say is, you know, that divert rate of five to eight percent of police calls for service that we can send Kahoots to is, is a response to mental, mental illness or counseling or whatever it would be that we would, if not for, for Kahoots, we would send a police officer to. That leaves an enormous amount of calls for service that they're responding to, they're addressing a need in the community that isn't addressed by either police or fire. So I think that's another telling story about, about the program and the service that it provides to the community.
Thank you, Lieutenant. I think what we'll do now is open it up for counsel to ask questions. I had a couple of questions that, number one, Tim, thank you so very much for detailing from your perspective, the cost savings to the community when you send the right people that have the right knowledge and tools. It's a real savings to the community. But a question I would have of Tim and then go over to the lieutenant. How, how are you funding this program? Number one, that's, that's going to be something that we need to ask. And if we're using city funds, then lieutenant, are those coming out of your general fund or are you using your community block grant funding to help supplement that? So Tim, tell us how, how your organization, how your organization is funded, the Whitebird Clinic is funded.
Yeah. Whitebird Clinic at large is a federally qualified health center and so a lot of our other services are receiving federal grants. Kahoots is the exception to that. We're not in that larger human resources, excuse me, health resources scope at the federal level. The Kahoots program for Eugene services receives all of its funding from the city of Eugene. That covers, you know, our personnel, but and then is also, there's some indirect costs around fleet maintenance, you know, use of the comm center. In the city of Springfield, it's smaller, they have fewer financial resources. We receive a combination of funding from the city of Springfield and a grant that is overseen by our county Health and Human Services that we receive from the state of Oregon. We also do a fair amount of fundraising and receive a wraparound services payment from Medicaid. That's a calculation based on a per member, per month basis. We don't do fee-for-service work.
And so then I'd go over to, to Lieutenant Ron, how, how much of the funding that the city is providing comes through general funds as compared to using some of your community block grant funding that the city of Eugene and Springfield both would qualify for?
Well, Mayor, everything comes through a general fund. So it's, we're, it comes through our budget, meaning the, the police department. We fund eight hundred and some odd thousand dollars right to Whitebird for your direct and indirect costs. So for instance, we pay a, a part of their rent for their insurance for their, their office, a part for their admin staff, et cetera, et cetera, their drug, their labor rates, and then we pay for their vehicles. And I think that's, it's kind of been one of those things that's always been that way. And I've heard a bunch of different stories about how it started and, and why it continues. I don't know that it would need to continue. It could be different. For right now, we, we have city-owned vans that the teams drive. We outfit them, we placard them, we maintain them, and they get an awful lot of miles.
And then one last clear- And then one last clarifying question from my perspective. Again, you, you are receiving community block grant funding. Does that go into general funds and then it's mixed? Or are you truly just using taxpayer dollars coming in to fund all of these services? Again, I just want to clarify because as we're, we're looking at revenues and services is something that we're struggling with, but I just want to get clarification on that.
I believe that it's all general fund from taxpayers. It's a very popular program in our community. We're a 68, 70 million dollar a year police department and like I said, we, we're a little over a million dollars to fund this whole project or this whole contract to add the fleet rates in. one thing that's I guess interesting to note or whatever over the last few years with talk of defunding and reallocating and things of that nature, every expansion that we've ever done has always been an investment in the team and, and that relationship. So it's always been an add. It's never been a, hey, you're not going to hire three officers because you're going to fund this. It's always been something the city has approved. In fact, one time they, they said, hey, we want to do more and just gave us more money for it. So we're, we're able to add resource, which was a nice surprise. But yeah, it's always been an add and never been a takeaway.
And so the value is perceived in the community and the values perceived by the police department of what Kahoots has been able to add to your, your approach?
Right. And from a, a simple dollars and cents aspect, Kahoots is cheaper than we are from, you know, sending officers to calls for service. I think that they're probably a little bit under, well, a, a ways underfunded here, but if, if you were to stand up something like this in your community, you know, it would be one of two ways. It'd either be with city staff or with county staff or some other partnership or like how we've done it with, with a nonprofit. Certainly the nonprofit is a cheaper way to go, but I wish we, we had a little more funding for them.
Thank you for those clarifications. I've got council president Drapkin's hand up and then I have the chief's hand up after that. So Remy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much to everybody that's here presenting today. This is very beneficial for us and we greatly appreciate it. I'm going to continue in the same vein of, of questions and, and Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you getting the, the, seeking the clarity on the community development block grants. Of course, that's an important question for us because we're not eligible for those monies. And so I, I understand why you're seeking that, that funding or that information. So you said that the, the city of Eugene provides about 800,000 out of the general fund. Just as a comparative, because our counselors are very in tune with where our police budget is right now, how much does that compare to the city of Eugene's police budget?
Right now, with both the, the van costs and with the contract costs, we're a little over a million. So our, our overall budget is around 70. I, I don't, haven't seen what 21s is yet. Last year with our general fund and our, our other sources of income, I think we were 72 million. So we're probably a little north of that.
For the police department?
Yes.
To speak clear, okay. And then you said that the, those that work are using, in the Kahoots system are using vehicles provided and insurance and offices and labor provided through the city. Does that mean that those responders are technically city employees?
No, and all employee, all responders for Kahoots team are going to be employees of Whitebird Clinic. So we, you know, we contract essentially as a vendor with the city of Eugene. So, you know, what Lieutenant Tenseth is talking about, those indirect costs and the contract that come to us are covering a portion of our facilities costs, our administrative overhead and everything, but our staff are Whitebird Clinic employees.
Okay. And then I was thinking about the insurance side of non-city employees driving city owned, driving city owned vehicles and a fleet and perhaps that's something that as we go through, well, Tim, could you address that? Is there, is, are there any insurance issues or hurdles that you had?
I, look, we carry a, a pretty hefty policy is, is the short of it. You know, there's, there's several types of liability insurance that we need to cover and then we also have an auto insurance policy for our agency and as a backup, we require all of our employees to carry their own personal auto liability insurance too.
And I think those, I think I got all three questions out, so that's it for me for now. Thank you very much.
Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for Lieutenant and Tim, if they can go back in the history. You mentioned Springfield, the city of Springfield is a contract as well as the city of Eugene. Obviously, Lane County is a, could be conceived, could be seen as a major partner in your endeavor. Do they provide any services? Are you providing any services to the Whitebird Clinic or their deputies slash EMS, however your, however Lane County set up for their fire response? Can you, can you answer that for me, please?
Yeah. In the city of Springfield, sorry, with the Springfield jurisdiction, we're actually able to respond within the urban growth boundary. We're not confined just to city limits because we have that county funding. And so that means that if we are going, you know, pretty far out, Marcola Road, for instance, that we are probably going to be engaging with sheriff's deputies. We do have some crossover with fire authority in those more remote areas that would be if we had an EMS request and we happen to be closer, for instance, to, you know, a lane fire authority station than the nearest Springfield firehouse. So it's, it's pretty limited right now. When we were getting ready to start our services in Springfield, we did a lot of ride alongs and spent a lot of time with LCSO. And I would argue that as we look to whatever mobile crisis is going to look like throughout our county, you know, whether that's Florence or Oak Ridge, that that's when we're going to really see a much stronger partnership with Lane County Sheriff.
I'm sorry, I missed that. They, they do, I, I missed that. Lane County does provide funding for this program?
Lane County, oh, the way it works is that the city of Springfield couldn't afford to bring us in, right? And certainly not for 24 hours of the day. In order to bring the Kahoots program into that community in 2014, we applied for a state grant that was overseen by Lane County Health and Human Services. So the way things work now is that for our services in Springfield, we receive funding from the city and Lane County Health and Human Services. So we have to do some reporting to the county and the state because of the dollars that we receive from them. And there's a separate contract that we have to negotiate and manage in addition to what we have with the city of Springfield for that jurisdiction's responses.
Okay. And I guess my final question for both of you, I don't want to take the counselors' times up, but every county, every jurisdiction's different, right? So what works in Eugene may, or Springfield for that matter, may not work for McMinnville. It all depends on what your resource pool is. You'd made, you'd made mention of that, is that you need partnerships, whether it's private, not, or private partners, whatever it might be. Can you see a collaborative effort? And I guess I'm sort of leading to, I don't want to lead you to an answer. Can you see a collaborative partnership between multiple jurisdictions and a county that's say, I think we're 110,000, 115,000? Can you see that being successful, a model like Kahoots where we're getting investments from multiple jurisdictions, multiple entities such as the county, such as the, the cities, et cetera, to make this work? Can you see that working in a, in a, in a county similar to YAM, like ours?
I think there's potential. Right now, we're actually working with a county in Maryland that is doing just this thing. And they have three fairly large sized municipalities that are all within the county and then some unincorporated areas too. There's already a lot of crossover, you know, folks are traveling within the county to receive services. And so what we're looking at is, you know, an overarching training and some components of service delivery that are going to be consistent across the board. But we also got to recognize that maybe there is something in one city that is going to work differently than, you know, another city in that county. And so it's up to the county officials, not, not me and my consulting team, to really determine how those nuances are going to work themselves out. But really looking at Yamhill County, there's even, you know, a lot of similarities to Salem, right? You know, West Salem and Maine Salem, there, it's, you got Marion and Polk County, very different neighborhoods, you know, there's, there are geographic boundaries that really limit travel. And so, you know, looking at, at McMinnville versus Yamhill County, I would consider, you know, trying to find a way to do this on that county level.
Lieutenant Tenseth, do you have any thoughts on that? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. I think all the, the communities that at least I've talked to over the past, you know, year and a half, when, when this program became, you know, kind of part of the national conversation is each community is different. Some are focused on a response to mental health, some are focused on a response to homelessness or something else that, that is kind of, you know, back east, they don't necessarily have the homeless numbers that we do have here on the west coast. La Mesa, California, talked to them a couple of different times and I don't know if Tim had a chance to talk to him or not, but they set up a system or a program based on a housing first model. So that was their, what their community found the most valuable. And so they, they spawned that up. But I think to your point is, you know, every community is going to have something unique and is, can this program be adapted to it? I think certainly it could.
Thank you. Tim, I'll ask you one other question. I know that you're working with a lot of other jurisdictions. Has Yamhill County reached out to you to look at this program in any shape or form as of this date?
No, we haven't had any interactions with Yamhill County. We have, you know, worked a lot in the Portland metro area. We are in contact with the Midlamet United Way, so that would be Marion County too. There's some interest in Lynn and Benton County, Jackson County as well, and we've done some work in Douglas too.
Thank you. I've got, I've got council president Drapkin and then Chris Chenoweth after that. So Remy first and then Chris.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. In your program, how many responders do you have working total in the program? And what's your, what's the population size that you're serving? And then I have two other questions, but if you don't mind those two first.
Yeah. We have about 50 folks on staff in the Kahoots program right now. That includes, you know, admin and relief staff who might not work regular hours, but are there doing our coverage. I'm going to have to, I'm a little rusty on the math as far as FTE that goes into our, our shifts, you know, to cover the vans 24/7, but we do have 60 service hours per day. So that means we have five teams that are each going to work a 12 hour shift. So that's, you know, 10 personnel each, each working 12 hours out of a 24 hour period. The Eugene Springfield metro area population comes in around 220 to 230,000.
Okay. Uh, thank you.
For, for clarification, that's both Eugene and Springfield?
Yes.
Yes, it's the service area. Wonderful. Okay, thank you. And then, uh, and then how, what are you using comparatively as your setting rates of pay? And then how does that, how does that work? Are those, are the, those medics and counselors part of any, a, a union or who is negotiating rates of pay for the responders with the city? Or with Whitebird? Or who is White, you, you understand?
Yeah. Whitebird Clinic has a, a, a non-hierarchical structure and so we really end up doing everything collectively. We don't have union representation for responders on Kahoots. And so when it comes time to look at wages, you know, or, or budget, contract, anything like that, it's the team as a whole that's coming together and saying, you know, this is what we agree on, this is what we are going to be asking for, you know, this offer looks great. And then representatives from Whitebird Clinic and the Kahoots team, you know, as essentially delegates of that larger group, then come and represent that perspective. Our, our wages historically have been tied to other departments within Whitebird Clinic, which in turn are informed by other nonprofits in our area, which means that we generally haven't paid very well. Our wages are a fraction of what other first responders, you know, would receive. And so, you know, one of the things that we're looking at with all of our funding partners is what would it take to, you know, identify the needed resources to increase that support and in turn raise wages for our staff?
Okay, thank you. And then I have just one other question before I hand the, the floor over here. What is, you, you mentioned doing consulting with a number of, of different municipalities, small and large. I'm assuming, and, and maybe this is an incorrect assumption, but that there's some sort of consulting fee or, or contract fee that you have to go in and help cities set that up and bring your expertise. How do you calculate that? How do you put those proposals together?
The rates that we calculate were based on, you know, advice and input from other consultants that we brought in to help us, you know, really guide our business development. It is unique for us as a nonprofit to have an arm of our organization that is, you know, largely, you know, more of a for-profit enterprise. We are still in our startup phase and have been really focused more on outreach than just revenue. And so this fiscal year, you know, hasn't gone in the black for consulting and outreach, but as, as this becomes a larger component of our services, we expect that we'll be able to use that revenue to help, you know, support patient needs, you know, community member needs. And if, if things go well over the next 10, 15 years, then maybe that'll be a source of revenue to support Kahoots operations too.
And then if a municipality was looking to bring in your services, would you be basing those rates on population size or?
Based, based on hourly work, you know, and so a smaller community inherently, there are going to be fewer folks that we need to meet with, you know, smaller number of stakeholders that we might want to be interviewing, you know, smaller pools to train. And so the costs are going to, you know, be, be smaller than what you would see in a larger municipality.
Thank you so much.
Let's go to Chris and then Sal after Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the information you provided. It's been very, very helpful and very, very interesting. I, I really only have a clarifying question because I don't want to get into micromanaging on, on, on this at this point as we're exploring. I heard you say, and just correct me if I heard this correct, heard you correctly, Tim, that Springfield chose not to do it because they couldn't afford it? Was that inaccurate?
Yeah. For, you know, for years, there was this understanding that if you were in crisis and you needed support, you had to get across the river into Eugene. And we actually had many folks over the years, many patients I encountered as a responder who would be part, you know, who would be in their car in whatever park or parking lot they could find that was closest to Springfield city limits, but was still in Eugene so that they could get a Kahoots response. There, there was, you know, a strong desire for us to serve that, that community, right? Really recognizing how much need there was. But that financial hurdle was something that was really too much for us to overcome before that, that grant became available.
Okay. So that's, that, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. And then I've lost our chief. I just wanted to comment to something that our chief said. I, I do like the inter-agency idea and I'm hopeful that we're going to continue, and maybe that's more in the discussion phase of this amongst ourselves, but the, the concept of trying to put together an inter-agency, maybe with, with Yamhill County Health and Human Services and maybe even with Newburgh, sounds like a promising approach to this.
And Chris, Matt, Matt's on the line. He just, he turned his screen off.
Yeah. And I, and I will comment, Jackson County, you know, here in Oregon is, is trying to figure out how to do this, you know, multi-agency approach right now. You know, it's a challenge to think about how you can have the same kind of response in White City and Ashland, right? But they're, they're really trying to get there. So we don't have to look outside of the state to find a county that's trying to do this too.
Right. And, and for us, the primary support is already coming from county, our mental health services and, and other services. So having them be first responders in those kinds of situations might actually be a benefit to them as well as to, to the, the residents that are needing the support and help. So I, I just see that as a win-win and of course, always the financial hurdles there. We, we, we're a small city, we're in the same boat as Springfield. We are a small city, we are in the same boat as Springfield, so trying to find a way to fund something without decimating our police force already that we have is obviously gonna be a struggle. Thank you for your time and thank you for answering the questions.
Thank you, Chris. Let's go to Sal.
Thank you, Mayor. I also appreciate the presentation and also all of your efforts in Eugene to humanely address this issue. So, thank you for both this presentation and for your work. It was mentioned during the presentation that the success of this program is based on the strength of community partnerships. And some of the pieces that were mentioned specifically were sobering shelter and access to other services. And this question's really more for Chief Scales and Chief Simons. What pieces of the puzzle does Eugene have in terms of those kinds of community partnerships that we lack in McMinnville? If you have any thoughts, and if not, I understand.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Peralta. So, the major hurdle right now I see, and we've dealt with this for decades, my, you know, is the sobering shelter, the sobering center. Yamhill County does not have that. So, that's one piece of the puzzle that is a huge gap right now. If we want, if that was to be offered as part of a service that we offer to our citizens.
Thank you. Just one comment. The Eugene Police Department budget, I think, was referenced at $68 million, and this program is a million-dollar program against that budget. And I think our MAC PD department is $9 million in that ballpark. So, just kinda a bit of a reality check in terms of the scale of the program. Not that we have to be everything that they are. I mean, it's a much larger population center, but I did just wanna frame that.
And Sal, to your point, I just did the math on that. And if we followed the same portion of the budget that is being used out of Eugene, we'd have about $128,000 to utilize if we followed the same.
Right, well, I mean, I think the economies of scale are probably a little different. But so, so, I guess the question that I have for the folks from Whitebird Clinic or from Eugene PD, what's the effect been in the community in terms of dealing with the most difficult or invisible issues related to homelessness? Because what I'm seeing in our community is that the cases that are most visible seem to be the ones that require the highest amount of services. And I'm wondering if you've had success in kind of working with some of those more challenging populations? Or is it the case that you're able to help people who are maybe in a little bit more of a stable situation make those transitions?
You know, my experience as a responder with the program prior to becoming an administrator was that there were often situations where, because we didn't look like more traditional first-response teams, that we were able to break through some of those initial barriers by utilizing the logo as opposed to wording on our uniforms. That really kind of furthers the message that we're part of Whitebird Clinic and not a city, you know, parks and open spaces employee. We're not, you know, playing close patrol or something like that. We generally, because of our clinic's reputation in the community, we do see that we can have some success with those, you know, most, most public and, you know, highest acuity situations. Additionally, because our responders typically have a lot of experience working in other services within our community prior to coming to work on Coochuts, that inside knowledge can make it easier to figure out how to navigate the complicated system of referrals and waitlists to actually get the kind of results that we might need for somebody. Our community really perceives that when the Coochuts van has shown up, that this person's situation is going to be handled. And, you know, like I said earlier, they don't really always understand that it's because of our connection to all of those other resources, you know, that we're able to do that kind of good advocacy or make that kind of impact for somebody.
I have two more questions. I did just wanna respond with the comment that I really appreciate the, how having a different kind of response would, meaning not a uniformed officer, would actually create a better context for that initial conversation with a lot of members of the public that are in that community that I've seen. So, I do share that point of view. Mayor, would you rather I just go through these two questions really quickly?
Go ahead, and Sal, Tinesse, and then Remy. You can follow after Sal.
Thank you, I appreciate that. This is a bit more of a general question, and again, for the folks in Eugene. And I'll just ask both of them because they're kind of related. So, we've seen for years increasing homelessness, both sheltered and unsheltered homelessness. I think we've been a, you know, number two or three or four consistently every year for several years. But my perception is that we've had, that has almost mushroomed in the last year. And I say that based on kind of observation in places like Portland. My question is, have you seen that same type of thing? Have you seen an increase in the last year, even on top of the increases that we'd been seeing prior to that? And then, the second related question is, is the city of Eugene currently successful in providing shelter and basic sanitation to its homeless population? Meaning, are you able, is the city able to deliver shelter and basic sanitation to every homeless person within the city of Eugene who needs it? Thank you.
Yeah, from what I understand anecdotally, and Ron, I'd be curious to hear your perspective, too. There seems to be an increase in folks experiencing homelessness in our community. From what I understand anecdotally, based on not just Coochuts reports, but other areas of Whitebird Clinic, is that a good deal of that is not just economic, but, you know, is really related to climate refugees, particularly folks who've been displaced by wildfires and also feel so traumatized that they're not comfortable returning to a FEMA shelter, you know, backup highway 126 or Highway 58. And I will acknowledge that I do a lot of work around advocacy in the community. And so, my response to the question of whether or not we have adequate services to meet basic needs for our unhoused neighbors is no, we're not there yet. There have been some significant strides. The city made a huge impact in a commitment to develop sanctioned encampments that are self-governed throughout town. And we have added 200 units of housing that way. But there are still, you know, profound needs. And there are still large encampments that are, you know, struggling to get all of the services they need. At the same time, you know, it's hard for the city to really find the space and the tolerance within the community to really respond and support some of these encampments.
I would say the same. The city has responded by setting up a unified command through our Public Works section. So, it's not necessarily a police response to a lot of this stuff that maybe once was prior to COVID. And I would say that COVID wildfires, you know, not being moved for the last 12, 18 months has kind of, there's been some sanctioned sites, some unsanctioned sites, some parks that allowed long-term camping. One of our, Washington Jefferson Street Park had 280 tents in a recent count. So, yeah, I would say, no, we're not, we're not meeting the need. But we've also made a huge commitment by setting up those sanctioned sites. And I think Tim very eloquently described how that process is going. But it is nowhere near adequate.
Thank you for your candor. Let's move over to Council President Grabkin. Remy?
Thank you. I just wanted to go back and make sure that my notes here aligned with the information we received because I heard a little bit of commentary that might seem to be different than what I heard. I heard very clearly twice that the funding is not part of the police budget. It is in addition to the police budget. And I wanted to clarify that because I heard Counselor Chenoweth's comment on decimating our police force. And then, we also talked about the, Mayor, you said a portion of police budget. When we were looking at those two numbers, the $1 million to the 72. And I think that I wanted that comparative as well. I wanted that number so that we knew what their police budget was and we could take that into consideration. But please correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm sure I heard from both of you repeatedly that this was not, the police budget was not in any way defunded. The funding for this program has been on top of the police budget.
Correct, it's encompassed in the police budget. So, we contract with Whitebird Clinic. I manage that contract and negotiate that every five years. And so, yes, it comes from general fund. It's an allocation every year. A line item in our budget is dedicated for this work. Typically, in our budget committee in April, May, there's always talks of unfunded need. And I was able, well, our chief advocated and got some additional funding a few years ago to expand some service. We got that extended this year, and our hope is that we'll be able to continue funding that additional service and providing more hours in the community, you know, on our vans. But that is always in addition, too. It's never been a paid police department. We want you to add $500,000 to the Coochuts budget, but we're not gonna make you hold for it. It's always been a make us hold for it or an add as a pass-through.
Okay. And then, the other thing I wanted to touch on was what Counselor Peralta was just talking about. You know, that we, in terms of whether or not our unhoused populations have mushroomed. And I, I'm just wondering if you have access to any information other than anecdotal information? Because I know there's some things we know, right? We know that our unhoused populations have increased visibility in the summer. So, there's typically a much higher call rate in the summer just based on people being outside and being able to be seen. We also locally, and I don't know if this was statewide or not, but locally, we lost our funding to do our point-in-time count in 2020. So, the data that we had to be able to track, which interestingly, you know, we were only tracking county data and only in 2019. And I believe Counselor Peralta, this was your work. The point-in-time count was then meant to integrate doing specific city counts. But then, in 2020, we got no funding from the state to actually carry out that point-in-time count. So, and I'm very interested, especially, Mr. Black, you mentioned that you're seeing this impact, I think, or proactive, you know, Captain Tenseth. I hope I got Captain correct.
Oh, Lieutenant, but that's all right.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Right, I'll take your promotion.
I noticed, I didn't, I believe Sal gave Captain Simons a promotion earlier, so. So, I mentioned climate refugees, and you said that was also kind of anecdotal information right now. So, that's mostly coming through either your responders or your community providers, and that's where you're collecting that information. And I'm so interested in this because we're, because we always operate off data, and we actually don't have data right now, including we don't have local data for some of the positive programming that's happened in the area. We don't know how, we've had a very successful motelling program happening here that has actually transitioned hundreds of people from even those who would have been identified as chronically homeless have been able to transition into permanent transitional housing. So, there's some big question marks for us locally that we won't be able to access the real data for for a long time. So, I know it was a lot, but if you could just talk a little bit more about that, those, where your anecdotal evidence is coming from?
The anecdotal things that I mentioned are coming from, you know, not just the Coochuts program but other Whitebird services. There is a homeless-by-name count, which is, you know, really just kind of a different means of gathering the same data that you would be looking to gather with a point-in-time count. I'm not up to date on those numbers, and so, I don't wanna misrepresent them. But that is information that we could, that I could get for you to really demonstrate, you know, the levels of homelessness in our community over the last couple of years.
And I would say from the police side of things, we intentionally don't collect homeless status. When we contact people, we don't, we don't have a box for unhoused. So, we can't run those numbers, that's intentional. So, they can't be perceived that we're taking some action based on a housing status. What I will say is, you know, anecdotally, you know, our officers are saying, you know, our numbers are way up. And certainly, during COVID, we did not enforce any camping ordinance-type things. So, that kind of allowed a situation to develop.
It's also important to recognize that, you know, folks experiencing homelessness only make up 60% of our patient population. There's another 40% of the folks that we see on Coochuts, day in, day out, you know, all night long, who are in some sort of more stable housing situation. And so, that really also, I think, is an acknowledgement of our ability to do prevention work. You know, if we can come in and intervene, provide somebody supports while they still have housing, you know, then they're much less likely to get evicted, you know, because they're in conflict with their roommates or, you know, are having a manic episode and are keeping everybody else up all night long in conflict.
And I would say our point-in-time counts locally are certainly not an all-inclusive. I think they speak to trends as opposed to any significant way to measure numbers.
Does that answer your questions, Remy? Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. This question is for Lieutenant Tenseth. Last year, voters decriminalized possession of drugs statewide. And I have a perception that there is some kind of intersection between that and homelessness for some folks. My question is, did, in your opinion, was there sufficient funds set aside for addiction-related services and mental health-related services related to that decriminalization in the city of Eugene? Does that scale to meet the problem? I guess that's the question. How is your, how is your city coping with those decriminalization changes? And do you have sufficient resources to meet addiction and those types of things in light of those changes? And I guess the second part is, have you, how has it affected your procedures as a PD as it relates to these types of interactions?
Well, sir, I guess the short answer is, I don't know because I'm not on the front lines anymore. I'm, I work in administrative services, so I do a different work. I keep our department lights on, cars going, information technology and a whole bunch of other things going. So, I don't have that firsthand knowledge to speak to it. I know that our officers are still, you know, very engaged with the higher level of drug dealing and the drug climate. They're making arrests quite often with large quantities. You know, the street-level use is now a violation. So, you're writing a ticket for what once was a crime. So, yeah, I just don't have the knowledge base to answer the question.
I can speak to the experience on the side of treatment facilities. I can speak to the experience on the side of treatment facilities. Whitebird Clinic operates an outpatient treatment program that has a lot of different resources. We've yet to see any sort of increased financial support as a result of Measure 110.
Thank you. And were the, were the resources adequate to the problem prior to those changes?
No. But I mean, really, that's the same response that I'm going to give for any question about, you know, mental health, you know, addiction, you know, housing or, or, you know, poverty related resources. There's profound need in our community and throughout the state of Oregon. And what we had before was helpful, you know, cahoots program has been successful because of those partnerships, but there's still, you know, far and away more need than there are, you know, counselors or, or treatment beds available for.
Yeah, over the last 20 years, the mental health network has, has imploded in Oregon.
Thank, thank you for that, both of you. I mean, my, my perception is that the, the amount of funds set aside by voters when that measure was passed was very minimal relative to, to the problem. And I think there was a perception that there would be more resources to address the issue and, and I, I haven't seen that either. So thank you for that perspective.
And thank you, Sal, for those questions. That kind of really has some long-term implications as we're working through that new law. So let's go ahead and any other questions for our two guests tonight? Kelly Minke, counselor?
So could you give me kind of a timeline of what you started with originally 32 years ago? And when were the major increases in services? Because I'm kind of trying to grasp this in a McMinnville sort of way. And I'd like to know what it took you to get to where you are at this point in time, which is still underfunded and still requires tremendous dedication on your part to make it work.
Yeah, when we started, you know, and this goes back to the Fourth of July, 1989, which was our first official shift as cahoots. When the program first started, we were available Tuesday through Saturday for cam to midnight. So it was five days, eight hours a day. In the mid 90s, we were able to move to seven out, seven days a week. And then eventually, over the next, I would say, I think 10 years or so, get to where we were operating in the city of Eugene, 12 hours a day, seven days a week. When I got hired in 2010, it was to expand our services. And so in 2011, we went to 18 service hours per day, seven days a week in the city of Eugene. But we had 24, sorry, let me, I'm not, I'm not explaining that very well. When I got hired for the expansion that implemented in 2011, we actually went to 24 service hours per day in an 18-hour period. And so that meant from, you know, 11:00 AM until 3:00 AM, there were, no, I'm off on my, yeah, from basically 11:00 AM to 3:00 AM, there were units available. And in the middle, we had an overlap to address our, our peak hours when we had the highest call volume. In 2014, we started to serve in the community of Springfield in addition to our services in Eugene at a rate of 12 hours a day, seven days a week. And then in 2015, 2016, both services in Eugene and Springfield expanded to the point where we became a 24/7 resource on both sides of the Lamm River.
Thank you very much.
From my perspective, we, we look at our demand data and we request coverage based on that data. So we, our data informs our decisions about when we want overlap and what that looks like.
How many people initially did you have actually working in the early days, in the 19, the early 1990s?
Yeah. Our, our original team was real small. I think that we had five or six folks who were dedicated to the work on cahoots. At that time, the other services that our clinic provided were also, you know, relatively small in scale compared to where they are now. And so some of those folks might have been doing shifts in our crisis office in addition to their work as a responder for the cahoots team.
Okay, that's very helpful. When did you, let's see, oh, you've got, the mid 90s, you go to seven days per week. Is that 24/7 or is that just?
That was, that was initially eight hours a day and then eventually, and I don't have the exact dates here, I apologize, but between the, the mid 90s and the early 2000s, we went from eight hours a day, seven days a week to 12 hours a day, seven days a week.
Okay, thank you very much. It's been a really interesting presentation.
Oh, I'll make a call out to councilors. Any last questions or thoughts, comments, discussions that you would have? We've got approximately 14 minutes left before we go into city council meeting. I'll go ahead with Counselor Garvin.
Yeah, I just wanted to hop on here and thank you guys for taking the time to present this to us tonight. I know it's been kind of a long time coming and I know you guys get lots of requests. So, and a lot of great information. I'm a numbers guy and other councilors have dove into those numbers, questions that I had written down as you were presenting. So I appreciate the other councilors asking those questions and getting the answers that I was looking for on those. So again, just want to say thank you and hope you guys have a great rest of your night.
Thank you, Adam. Not seeing any other hands from councilors. Chief Skels, do you have any follow-up questions or comments?
Uh, no, I don't. Um, I, well, actually I do have some follow-up comments. I just want to thank Tim very, very much for all the insight. And you have been a tremendous amount of information for our council and our staff over the last couple of months when we've been trying to get ahold of, or just get the sets. Same with Lieutenant Tinsit, thank you so much. You know, as I've talked to, and I don't want to grandstand here, I don't want to get up on a soapbox, but I've talked with a number of you and I've talked, our staff at MACPD would wholeheartedly love to get out of the business of having to manage calls for service, dealing with those that are in mental health crisis or those that we cannot provide adequate services for. So my hope is that through this conversation, and again, I've spoke through our lipstick and I, I think there's a real, I've got a real desire to hopefully move the needle. And I, I would hope, I know Chief Cosmic, he was on this call and I know Sheriff Svenson was on this call, I saw Chief Graven. There is a great deal of work, at least that we can start to do and try to, to move the needle. Not that we don't already have a, a good collaboration with the ML County Health and Human Services through the COS program when they're out with us and they're assisting us. But I think there is such a different level that our county can take, providing services to those that do not need to be involved with police whatsoever. There, there will be those times, like I've said in the past, there will be those times that we will have to be involved. But if we can mitigate our interactions and, and limit those to those that are really necessary, I think it's a win for our staff. I think it's a win for our community. I think it's a win for those that are in need of services. So however the needle and however we get that dialogue moving, I, I am wholeheartedly in support of starting to have conversations. And I know it's a money, I, I know it's money, it always will be money. But if the conversations can happen at a high level and we can get those that are available and have the ability to take part in these sorts of collaborative efforts, I think it's a win. And I think we can do some really great things in ML County. So with that being said, I will get off my soapbox. But I'm on board with trying to figure something out long-term here before, before I leave my chiefdom here in McMinnville.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Gary has his hand up. So Zach?
Thank, thank you. All, all my questions were taken by other councilors. So I was over here scrambling with 10 minutes left to come up with one because I can't let a work session go by without jumping in there. I'll just, you know, double down on all the thanks and appreciate the information. Long time coming. And I know we kind of pounded the door to make sure this happened and, and we got online. And so I really appreciate everyone's time here tonight, listening and speaking. My, my, my kind of main question that was left unasked and I have interest in probably directed towards Mr. Black. Staffing, what are you sort of, how often and when do you do, when you have vacancies for sort of high qualified positions or high, high skill? I don't know if you have a, if you have a compendium or a, or a, just sort of a, is there a wide range of skills that you need as far as just, you know, low skill versus high skill? And what, how many people are out there with those qualifications at every degree? And when you have positions open in various levels of skill, how, how easy or tough is it to find people? You know, if you were all of a sudden have five open positions or, or be needing five people, would you be able to fill those? Is it tough to find the people that are qualified? I think that's kind of our, my main themes are around sort of staffing and how has it been to get and maintain good people on the team? I imagine it's sort of a high, high-stress, tough job. And not only having, having people, but retaining people is, is kind of where I'm, I'm, I'm looking for some information.
Yeah, so with the caveat that wages are our biggest issue when it comes to retention, we generally don't have too hard of a time getting interest when we do have openings. You know, generally it's really kind of filtering through and, and finding the folks who are going to be a good fit for the work. Because we don't require a master's level credential, we're a voluntary service, we're not doing diagnoses, we're not doing directors' holds. We're really looking for folks that are going to fall more into the credentialing for a qualified mental health associate in the state of Oregon. So that's either education or experience that's really relevant. And one of the best crisis workers that we've had in recent years was more recently a bartender and a barista before they became a crisis worker and really understanding community, understanding how to work with folks, deescalate and, you know, even the concept of self-medication. Those were all things that were very easy for them to really kind of bring into that work of crisis de-escalation. So, you know, we do have some master's level clinicians on the team. They generally are going to be providing sorts of clinical support through clinical supervision. But, you know, my background was in wilderness therapy. You know, that's, that's what really gave me the skills that I needed to come in and do this work for cahoots. And I don't know if another crisis, you know, team that was doing work on the phone in an office would have considered somebody who's, you know, experienced was really talking about feelings out in the snow.
Thank you, Zach, for the question. We've got two hands up, Counselor Peralta and Council President Drapkin. I'll just remind you that we have seven minutes before we start our next session. So keep that in mind. Go ahead, Sal.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to just make the comment for the record that I would support funding for some kind of crisis intervention model along this, these lines, in addition, as sort of an add-on to the police budget, assuming that that's something that we can find revenue for, but I think it's something that we should prioritize. So just wanted to share that perspective.
Thank you, Sal. And then Remy?
Thank you. Two questions about your staffing. One, is the schools, the, is the university there very much a feeder then for your staff?
It can be. You know, particularly folks who are going through the Family and Human Services course, you know, psychology majors. We have had a couple of folks who actually started as interns, you know, during their senior projects and then were able to move into positions as responders. Because we also have Lane Community College with a really strong EMT program, that becomes one of our primary recruitment pools for our medics.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense. And then, do you offer a bilingual pay incentive? And how many of your staff are, are bilingual? And, and, and how many languages do staff members have fluency in?
Yeah, and we have five staff who are willing to identify themselves as bilingual. And in all of those cases, it's a Spanish, you know, fluency in addition to English. One of those folks is somebody for whom Spanish was their first language. So we do have one native speaker with us right now. And we offer a very modest pay differential for bilingual skills and are working with some resources to create opportunities for more staff to either, you know, gain a new language or brush up on their skills.
Great, okay, thank you. And is, and then kind of tied in with that, do any, are any, and I know you just answered this question, but I'm just going to ask you, are any of your staff fluent in ASL?
No, not right now. And that's something that we were, you know, talking about even a couple of years ago when I was still in an operations management position. You know, ASL is something that I think would be an easier hurdle, honestly, in a lot of ways for us to get over than some of the other language learning ideas that have been tossed around. It's, it's hard, you know, when it's blowing wind and, you know, it's raining, it's Oregon, right? You know, and we're trying to communicate with written notes with somebody.
Yeah, especially, and then add a mask on top of that so there's no reading, yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much again. This was wonderful. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you, thank you both for joining us today.
So our time has run out. And so again, Lieutenant and Tim, thank you so very much. Your presentations were, you were very articulate. You read, write to the, the points that we needed to know. Again, you're getting recognized for good things, but we know that this started a long time ago and it doesn't happen overnight. It's a, it's a growth process. And so we've always turned with Jeff's involvement in Springfield for a number of years in Lane County, we know there's good things going. And so we turn to you guys every once in a while just to, to not reinvent a wheel. And you've shown us today that you've got a program and a process that's really doing well. So again, thank you for your time. And with that being said, we will go ahead and adjourn our work session and we will come back at 7 o'clock, which is in three minutes, and we'll go from there. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
This is same link, right? Stay here.
I think so, I just wanted to.
Yes, Zach, we're staying, we're staying on this clock. Okay, good.
Thanks for the call.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's all right.
I know, I was like, oh my God, I should have checked that before. Before I started the meeting.
Recording in progress.
Do we wear a mask?
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, if you're going to speak?
Oh, I'm going to speak.
Okay.
It is 7 o'clock, so I'll ask councilors to. It is seven o'clock, and so I'll ask councilors to, uh, return to their computers. And I will call to order the August tenth, two thousand twenty-one city council meeting. I will ask our city recorder, Claudia, if you'd do a roll call?
Counselor Geary? Counselor Geary? Uh, Counselor Garvin?
Here.
Counselor Minky?
Here.
Counselor Peralta?
Here.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Present.
Counsel President Drapkin?
Here.
And Mayor Hill?
Here. Thank you, Claudia. Um, we will now, uh, go to the pledge of allegiance. I've asked, uh, Counselor Minky to lead us this evening in the pledge.
Hey, let's all rise. I always feel strange about this. I pledge allegiance to.
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor, for leading us through that. Uh, this evening, we'll start with a, a proclamation, and this evening we have, uh, a proclamation on the upcoming Lemonade Day, and we have, uh, on the line with us, the President and CEO of the Chamber, Gloria Goodrum, and so Gloria, I mean, Joya, I don't know where I'm coming from. Joya, it's good to have you on the call, and, uh, could you just give us some introductions to Lemonade Day before I read the, uh, the proclamation?
Thank you. And Mayor, you're not the first person to call me Gloria. I'm just, anyway, thank you so much. I, uh, so Lemonade Day, we've been doing it, this is our seventh year, we've got two hundred and forty kids registered for Lemonade Day, and, uh, it is basically an opportunity for kids to learn about entrepreneurship by starting a lemonade stand, starting and running a lemonade stand. We've had, um, wonderful, uh, partners and sponsors, uh, and man, not even, even from outside of our community. Amanda, thank you for making that happen, and, uh, certainly our, uh, On Point and, uh, let's see, uh, Grocery Outlet and First Federal, we've got so many, so many people helping this event, uh, go off. And Mayor, I want to thank you for all of the times that you have come and walked around with us and visited with kids, and I look forward to seeing you on August twenty-first. Uh, here, uh, we'll be meeting here at the Chamber and walking around. So if people are interested in, um, supporting our kids, go out and find a lemonade stand. You can find information at McMinville.org or lemonade day dot org slash McMinville, and there should be a map that will show you where you can find the kids and their lemonade stands.
Thank you, Joya, better known as Gloria.
First time.
I'll take that back. So, uh, with that, uh, with that, uh, introduction from, uh, from our illustrious, uh, Chamber CEO, I will go ahead and really read the proclamation, and we'll get you a signed copy, uh, for the Chamber office. Uh, whereas Lemonade Day is a fun, free, experimental learning program that launched in Houston, Texas in two thousand and seven, and has grown from two thousand seven hundred kids in one city to over a million kids in cities across America and Canada. And whereas there are two hundred and fifty kids in McMinville and surrounding communities who will be learning how to be young entrepreneurs by operating and, uh, opening their own business, a lemonade stand, and whereas the community business leaders are supporting and encouraging these young entrepreneurs to be brave and doing big things, and whereas since its inception, Lemonade Day has provided access to the experience of business ownership to youth from all walks of life who learn lifelong business skills and principles while learning how to make money, where they are encouraged to spend a little, save a little, and share a little. And whereas the mission of Lemonade Day is to empower, empower today's youth to become tomorrow's, tomorrow's entrepreneurs. Now therefore, I Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the City of McMinville, Dubai here, proclaim Saturday, August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one is Lemonade Day in McMinville, and we urge all citizens to recognize and encourage the efforts of our kids as they learn about being young entrepreneurs while they open, operate their own businesses. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinville to be affixed this, the tenth day of August, two thousand and twenty-one. Signed, Scott A. Hill, Mayor of McMinville. And again, as Joya had mentioned, what a delight it is to go out and see these kids who truly have put tremendous, tremendous time and effort into building stands, creativity and marketing, um, and a good product. And then also behind that is to watch mom and dad smile at the accomplishments of their kids. So, again, Saturday, the twenty-first of August, there will be a group of us that will be visiting the stands on Third Street, and, uh, that's kind of our traditional place. But I would ask everyone on this call to venture out to the, uh, just, you only have to go a few blocks, and you're going to find a lemonade stand in your, in your neighborhood and participate and thank these kids for what they're doing. So Joya, thank you, and it's good to have you on the call. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're absolutely, thank you. Our comments from community members, this is the opportunity we have, uh, for individuals in the audience to speak on, uh, topics other than a matter in litigation, a quasi judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. Uh, we limit the comments to three minutes, and I'll let you know when those three minutes are up. Uh, if you wish to speak, uh, let, uh, Claudia know. Uh, we'll also give those that are on the, the phone an opportunity to, to, uh, come on and, and speak. Uh, announce yourself by name and, uh, and speak to the council. So we'll go ahead and start the process of comments from our, uh, citizens today. Claudia, do we have anyone that would like to speak?
Yes, we'll start with Dr. Pierce via Zoom.
Dr. Pierce, it's good to have you on our call again. Go ahead.
Yes, hi.
Welcome.
Just one second. Um, thank you, Council. Um, it was great to hear that, uh, Kahoots presentation, I really enjoyed it. Um, and I was encouraging to hear Chief Scales talking about his support and desire for something similar in our town. Um, I was really encouraged by that, and I think it's, it is, like you said, a really good starting point. There's some momentum here to take what we are learning and see how it works to our city, because we obviously have special needs here, and, um, hopefully we can do that, because obviously these issues are not getting any better. Um, and then the second thing is that this week I did speak with some of our houseless community, um, and I'm hearing of attacks, um, on our houseless community. We're citizens, members of the community are, I've heard of, um, beatings, and then also destruction of property. And I find this very, I mean, obviously this can happen to anybody, but we have to recognize that houses community probably has less rights, so to speak, because they don't have the resources and privilege to be taken seriously often. Um, I'm hearing from them that they're scared, um, and I'm also hearing of increased harassment from the crew members, specific officers, um, in particular. And it seems like since we've had crew start, we've had an uptick in harassment of houseless community, um, and I find that extremely stressful. I mean, great, we have this new service, but is the sole intention to, um, target certain individuals? And I, uh, sure, it's an issue, but it's not going away. And, uh, heartless, callous, uh, unkind, cruel approach to handling houseless people is not the solution. Um, and you guys as a city council have the ability to change ordinances, you have the, the ability to have conversations with police department, and I really hope that you are and want to encourage you to continue having these conversations, because these are people that we need to protect. Um, they're valuable members of our community, even if they're struggling, because there's plenty of people in the houses next door having drug problems, marital problems, there's, there's, there's all sorts of problems, but tucked away in these homes of privilege. We don't need to just judge people on the street as being different, um, or not deserving of the attention and care. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
And Tynan?
Go ahead, uh, Claudia, do we, who's next?
Next, we have Tynan Pierce, also via Zoom.
Tynan, welcome. It's good to hear from you. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. Uh, first off, I'd like to echo the sentiments of my wife in regards to the Kahoots presentation. As many of you said, it was, uh, about a year in the works to have that happen. It was wonderful that these staff, open-minded and looking at potential implementation of similar such services in our community and being creative about how you could potentially partner with other counties, other entities within the county to make it happen. And I also want to echo the idea that Chief Scales' personal enthusiasm and support of this sort of venture, uh, cannot be understated. It's a very important part, and I think that hopefully all of you are listening to that and hearing the calls from community and from your own police chief, that these things need to be taken, uh, quite seriously. So then, building from that, two more points. Uh, one is, I understand that there's budgeting all the time, there's always these budget concerns, and it seems like one of the things that could be addressed with very little budget influence would be just changing these ordinances and changing the fines associated with them. Uh, I'm not sure if the Affordable Housing Committee or the DEI Committee is looking at the campaign ordinances and looking at changing them. I'm not sure if your legal, uh, advisement is looking at that. I know there's been many cases throughout the state on how those things are enforced, and I really hope to hear back from somebody about whether or not one of those two committees is looking at adjusting the really ridiculous fines that go along with these camping ordinances and these basically camping bans, because it seems like that's a way to do it without having to, you know, create a special team to deal with this. We can just deal with it right now. All right, so that's that portion of it, and then the second portion of it, or the third, I suppose, is I'm not sure, I'm hoping that many of you already looked at the IPCC report that was released this week, basically saying that this is code red for humanity, and that there's literally like a ten-year increase already on any models that could have been predicting what's happening for our world in climate catastrophe. So once again, I'm pleading with you to take a similar sense of urgency that you do to other such things, for example, COVID, and apply that to things like our climate catastrophe. This is literally, quite literally, the biggest thing that we have ever going to be dealing with as communities. We are now experiencing our third heat wave here in just this summer, and community members are scrambling to help each other through these challenging times, and the burden is on all of us, proportionally more burdensome for you all as elected officials and the policymakers to take decisive and courageous action to protect our vulnerable communities. There, there is no such thing as doing too much. There's no such thing. That, there's, like, like, we're literally only now, like, there's just not enough. That's the only thing you can do is not enough. So please, 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 the urgency that you seem to have for these other matters, please bring them to bear on something of this enormous magnitude, and please make sure you're looking at the IPCC report and reading it and sharing it amongst each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Tynan. Claudia, next?
Next, we have Amy Gillette.
Amy, welcome.
Hello, City Council.
Welcome.
Um, I wanted to start out by saying, there has got to be more legal and humane way to help not hinder the homeless community. I want to bring it to your attention that the way you are illegally seizing, destroying, and not returning the homeless population's property is wrong on a legal standpoint and a moral standpoint. Your new crime unit that is doing this is not following legal codes that are put into place to protect the homeless. From what I have seen these past couple of months, you have broke the House Bill three one two four that was brought into play in June of this year. You have also done, not done, ORS two oh three point zero seven nine, stating you are to give twenty-four hours written notice in English and Spanish before citing or seizing your so-called evidence. I ask once again, take into consideration a small pod city to help reduce prohibited camping tickets being given illegally. If this does not come to humane solution soon, I have already started the process of reaching out to news crews and newspapers and lawyers to bring this attention, so that people know the City of McMinville and their police department are operating against state laws and House bills that have been put in place for this exact reason, to prevent what is going on now today in this community. Also, these pods are costing people, building them five hundred dollars in materials and not including what time they're putting into it. So you guys are not only doing that, but you guys are taking from people that are trying to help. Please tell me how knocking the homeless back down and making them start all over is humane or solving the homeless issue. I can tell you recently, you have not only been targeting people that are homeless and not working, but you're also targeting people who are trying to start over, that have gotten jobs and are trying to make it in this expensive soc- society. By next city council meeting, I will have a more thought-out plan for the Little House Pod City, and hope that for once you will take this seriously. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amy. Claudia, next?
Next, we have Jacob Miller.
Jacob, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Uh, I too, uh, would like to address, uh, the issues, uh, with, uh, the seizing of properties and not, uh, particularly following, uh, the state law. I think that the, um, uh, people that are out there enforcing law, not following the law breeds contempt for the law, and it's an open invitation for anarchy. Um, it's been brought up at a couple of these meetings, and including right now by Amy, uh, HB, uh, three one two four. I mean, it's state law, right? It's state law. Um, you know, there's, uh, also, I've noticed at the same twenty-four hour abandoned, uh, uh, vehicle trailer just kind of says it all tag in town, uh, is way constitutionally, I think, it just goes way vague. We're, we're talking about, um, you know, storage, um, you know, somebody being told that they're storing something just based off of a legal determination that the officer makes while something else right next to it, right up the road from it, right down from it, is the exact same thing. And taking those things and telling people that they can't do anything about it, um, that it within, uh, it, because there's, there are twenty-four hours is up. Uh, when we apply those same things, that same sticker to these pods, the same thing is happening. Twenty-four hours is up, it's gone, it's seized. Um, in this case, seized and taken as evidence, and who knows when, uh, people are going to get back, if it's going to be in, uh, uh, in pieces. Um, I, I too am concerned about community members that are putting out, um, you know, that are like putting out property and saying, hey, you can be here. I thought we wanted people to, uh, actually step out and do that, except for we had property members threatened with a five hundred dollar day fine and revocation of a right to use their property as they see fit, uh, if they didn't comply with some, you know, new extra, um, rules, uh, that, that just make it harder for people to continue to move forward. Uh, I, I'm concerned about the arbitrary enforcement, and that's what it seems to be. I'm, I'm concerned about, uh, the applied discrimination, that, I mean, if somebody wanted to walk with me, I could show them, but I don't want to get anybody in trouble. I want to fix this if we can. I want to get it to a point where it's not causing, uh, damage to people, uh, and, you know, double down damage to the, to the, uh, you know, to the community. Um, you know, I, I think we can come up to a better, uh, reasonable, um, solutions if we got into communication, but what I'm finding is I'm not really hearing much back. Um, and, uh, it seems like when I talk, I get a lot of pushback, if you know what I'm saying. Um, so, um, hopefully none of that's happening this evening, but I want to thank you for your time and really hope, uh, the people that are looking at that stuff continue to and continue to address it. Uh, my email has been shared with the city as well as my phone number. I mean, I would, I would like to talk about some of these things seriously. Um, you know, I think we could get somewhere, uh, if we really sat down and started talking and listening and, um, you know, putting things forward into action. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Jacob. Claudia, next?
Next, we have Richard Henricks.
Richard, welcome.
Welcome, council members. Um, my topic today is on the homeless, um, mis- unfortunate people of this community. Um, the main thing I want to focus on is communication and the laws that have not been followed by our city police, which are there to serve and protect. And from recent experience, my home was taken, my best friend's home was taken, um, without any notice being provided, um, both arrested for prohibited camping. I was at work. I was at work. I have three jobs. I still cannot afford a place in McMinnville yet. I got a $1,250 ticket. That's ridiculous. How is somebody homeless trying to get back on their feet supposed to pay that? Like I say, communication is key. Officers say we can stay someplace, the next day, other officers come in, say, no, that wasn't said, they call us liars and give us a ticket. There is something that can be done, but it's got to be teamwork, communication, and people just need to have a little bit of compassion and a bigger heart, know what they're doing. I'm surprised that McMinnville Police Force are able to do what they do and still get away with it. I'm homeless until I go to court. My best friend is homeless till he goes to court, and who knows if we're going to get our property back. It's illegal. I call that stealing. Anyway, that's all I have to say, council. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Claudia, next?
Next we have William Eckenrode.
William, welcome.
Thank you. Never, never done this before, so this is my, my first time, but I would like to address some of my concerns. Um, I can only speak to, to what I know and what I've seen. And what I've seen is bad enough, but getting back to, to Rich, who just spoke, he forgot to mention a couple of things. Number one, he never received any kind of notice to vacate. So his property, as far as I'm concerned, and as far as, um, attorneys that, that some people have talked to, it was unlawful confiscation. He never received any notice, him and Daryl. So that's important to, to note for the record, because they, they received no notice, and that's, that's not acceptable. And, uh, whether it was 24 hours or 72 hours, they got neither one. So, uh, the other thing that I have to bring up with Daryl and Rich, who lost their, their pods that actually people are building for the homeless community, for people to stay in, is that there's no, there were two officers who showed up about 12 hours before, 10, 12 hours before their property was confiscated, and they said they were within ordinance. They were in legal compliance, two officers, and I would name them, but I'm not going to right now because I don't feel like it's necessary. If you guys want to know the names, I will give you the names at a future time, but I don't want to say it over record, but I, I know who the names are. And they gave, they told them he was in, they were both within compliance, and 10 hours later, their property was confiscated, and that's not acceptable. It's not acceptable, because either that's, there's a lack of training there, there's a lack of, something, something's going on, a lack of communication, uh, officers don't know what's going on, or some are violating people's rights, and that's why unfortunately, not me, but other people are contacting lawyers. Because the problem is, is you can have some officer saying, you know, you're within the legal rights where you are, you know, and then other officers coming in 10 hours later and confiscating property saying, no, you're without your rights, when they were in the same exact place. So I don't, I don't know what's going on there. I don't want to cause problems, that's not why I'm here. Um, I only speak to what I know and to what I've seen and to, to people who I trust, and I've seen a lot of stuff out here. Um, so I'll, I'll tell you my story real quick.
You have about 15 seconds.
Okay, okay, well, that's really not enough, so I may have to come back the next time. Anyways, um, yeah, I'll come back the next time. Thank you.
Thank you, William. Claudia, next?
Next we have Kristin Norton.
Kristin, welcome.
Hi. So, everybody else has pretty well covered what I wanted to say, except for one thing I just wanted to point out, and that was, um, I used to work for Champion Team, which has now been closed down, and, um, during my time there, I was, um, helping the homeless with, um, going to court, um, providing the computer and the phone, um, so that they were able to appear in municipal court. And, you know, I've, what I've noticed through that process, which I, I continue to do even now, um, is the, the city and the county, they're paying all this money out for prosecuting or going out and ticketing these people. They're paying for them to be brought into court, um, but once they're in court, um, instead of enforcing the fine, they're being given the opportunity to do what's called the Hands Up Program, um, which is going and getting an intake with either YCAP or Provoking Hope, which I think is an awesome program, um, it definitely has its purpose. But my point is, I don't understand why all this money is being put out for that, when it could be better suited to be helping get a property where these pods could be parked and nobody, you know, has to lose them. I, I just, I'm, it seems to me like, I, I was homeless myself when this ordinance started, and I now, you know, have a home, um, but it just, it's, this has evolved from, um, first it was one thing and then it's another, and the rules just keep changing, and you can't expect everybody to keep up with those changing rules. Um, and just as a quick example, um, the other day, I had city ordinance come up to my home and tell me that I could no longer park my cars, um, in front of, like, on the street, and, mind you, my, my husband had just passed away, and we had a lot of people coming to the house, and, um, the neighbors had complained because it's a cul-de-sac. And so when the lady from ordinance shows up, she tells me that, um, only one car can be parked on the street and has to be directly in front of my house, and then told me that my husband's truck was subject to be towed because it, the tags were bad. And I tried to explain to her, we made an appointment, we just, it's two months out to get the tags, um, but it's not being driven, um, but apparently you cannot now even have a, a, a vehicle with no tags in your, in your property or on your property. So anyhow, um, when she told me, like, you have to, you can only have one car on the street and so it, and, and it has to be parked directly in front of your house, I said, well, okay, so are you going to go to my neighbor over here and have them move their two cars that is always parked in front of my house, which keeps me from being able to park there? And she basically just waved her hand and went and got in her car, so I could not quite understand, you know, why, why, why are the rules made that way? Like, I don't understand why, um, she was willing to come to my home, but not go to them to fix the problem, and I just think it's money being wasted.
Thank you, Christine.
Yes, thank you.
Uh-huh. Claudia, next?
Next we have Lisa Nice.
Lisa, welcome.
Thank you. So, um, the same, I mean, basically everybody's covered the same things, and, and that's what my thing is, is that taking things from the homeless with no notice or even in general like they are, um, especially, like, I've had stuff taken before by law enforcement, and then I see it happening all the time, and taking stuff from people and having, then having to replace it isn't, isn't going to, um, get them anywhere and to move up in the, even in a workforce or even off the streets, you know, because they spend all their money on replacing stuff that the cops are just going to take again, which is against the ordinance, um, if it's, you know, within the hours or whatever, or the days, you know, and it just, and it's taking their shelter away, this tents, the, the pods, and all of that, and it's making it so people aren't safe, they don't feel safe, they feel like they're going to go to jail or get tickets and that they can't pay because they're not working or whatever it may be. And it just keeps, it's a, it's like a revolving door, that, um, now, I mean, all the codes are being definitely violated by state laws, several, and, and, and no matter what you say to those officers, even in compliance, it, it always turns out that you're the, doing something, the worst part, you're doing everything wrong. And so it's like, you can't trust, and you're not going to, any of, you're not going to be safe sleeping somewhere at night, even if they tell you can, or like the pods, for instance, where they say they can park them, then taking them with no notice is ridiculous. Cars being towed, um, less than 24 hours, that should, should have never been towed, that are working, running vehicles that are moved all the time, you know, it's just, it's making it harder on everybody, to get off the streets and, and there's lots of different reasons. I mean, when we need more shelter, I mean, if that's what they don't want, obviously they don't want us on the streets, sleeping in parks or sleeping on the pods or whatever, then they need to open the shelter, um, you're, um, doesn't clean us over or not, because, I mean, obviously the police enforcement, if they want, if they want to pass this ordinance of us being off, uh, they don't want them in the parks, or don't want them on the side of the street or whatever it is, it doesn't matter the location, it's the point of that there are so many rights and, um, violated here. Um, we shouldn't have to fear that we're going to go to jail because we lay down and go to sleep at night somewhere where we've been told we can sleep, or, um, I've seen that so many times, people get arrested for, um, you know, are woken up at three or four times a night to move, and, and then the cop will tell them that they can move to here, and then they, the next cop comes around and it's a different officer, and that they have to move from there, and then the cops, then they get in trouble for trespassing or all this, because they, one officer says one thing and another says the other. It's, it's not helping our community, it's making our community unsafe, and it's not, and it needs to change, and the ordinance just needs to be taken right, done right.
Thank you for your testimony, Lisa.
Thank you.
Claudia?
Next we have Michael Yates.
Michael, welcome.
It's good to see everybody. I'd just like to first start this off by saying, you know, I'm grateful to be alive, you know? People's got a lot going on, I've been through a lot. I'm not going to go in details about things I've been through recently, but I mean, I'd just like to say, you know, thank you for allowing me to talk, you know, I've been to some city council meetings before, but, um, you know, I look around, some of these people here, you know, we've been here for, in the community for quite some time, and, you know? Yeah, everybody's got issues, like, I got my own, maybe some of them might be unfixable, but I mean, don't, everybody kind of has some personal issues that, you know, could kind of touch you when, but, but now that's out of the way, you know? But I mean, we've been here for a while and, you know, a lot's come against us, and, you know, hey, you know, it's been kind of back and forth, back and forth, you know? I'll be honest with you, out of being angry sometimes, I've said some things against people and that locally govern the place, you know? I've said some things out of anger and, you know? Even got kind of rowdy sometimes, but, you know, hey, you know, I've taken on a lot myself, and I just want, that's why I want to say, I'm thankful to be alive, you know? I believe there's a reason, you know? We're here, you know? Um, we're just trying to make it an everyday life, you know? And, you know, it can be really humbling sometimes, especially being out here on the streets. You know, I, I have some family nearby, but, you know, they have to do their own thing, so it's nice to be able to go and visit them sometimes, but before I came here, yeah, I knew things would be difficult, I, I didn't know what all to have to expect, you know? And yeah, I've said some things out of anger sometimes against the city and everything, but, you know? Aren't we all just trying to make it for everyday life, you know?
Michael?
Yes?
Michael, your time is up. Thank you for your comments this evening.
All right, you guys, you guys have a good day.
Claudia?
Oh, okay, thanks. Hi, um, my name is Deborah Schwartzkoff, and I wanted to speak to the council again. Um, I would just like to say that, um, the two gentlemen that had their pods taken by the police recently, Darrell and Rich, um, I've known them for about seven or eight months now, and they really prided themselves on keeping their pods nice, and when they had carts, keeping their carts organized, and being very cleanly about their area that they were staying in. And it takes people a long time to acquire things to, um, to make their life satisfactory on the street, um, such as their tents and their sleeping bags, and to have these things taken from them illegally in these last two cases, um, really strips them of their ability to survive on the streets, which, streets, which is bad enough to begin with. So we would like those pods returned with their belongings, um, um, because it does, as I said, uh, takes a great deal of time and effort to acquire just the basic necessities to, um, uh, take care of their needs. And I would also like to see if, um, porta-potties could be set up and people have access to water, especially with the increased temperatures, um, because a lot of these people cannot afford to continuously buy the water that's needed to sustain themselves. Um, so, um, I appreciate your time and your consideration in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Next, Claudia?
That is everyone, Mayor and Council.
Thank you for your comments this evening. We now have a presentation, and, uh, we have a presentation from Dave Hockleburg, who's the Chair of the Yamhill County Newburgh-Dundee Bypass Committee, uh, one of the longest-standing committees I know of in the county, that, and they're doing some really good work. But Dave's going to present to the council this evening, as he's done in councils in Newburgh and Dundee, and then had an opportunity last Thursday to address the county commissioners. Dave has worked tirelessly on the bypass to, uh, allow us to, um, get to market in a faster, more efficient way with the bypass, uh, and he has been our number-one advocate. So with that, Mr. Hockleburg, it's, we welcome you, it's good to see you and your good work. So Dave, we'll turn the time over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, City Manager Towery. I am delighted to come and have an opportunity to talk to you tonight and to share what is happening on the bypass. The city of McMinnville and its partners, Newburgh-Dundee, Yamhill County, the Confederate Tribes of the Grand Vawn, can really take enormous pride and stop and think about what an incredible achievement they've made on the Newburgh-Dundee bypass project. At a time where it seems like everything is wrong and nothing's going right, this is something that has just gone well, and it's happened because of this city council, your prior councilors and city managers and mayors. But let me tell you, I have had a chance in the past week and a half to talk to the members of the Yamhill County Commission, to the city councils of Dundee and Newburgh, and those have had very, very positive conversations. We'll get into why, but it's really about the project and it's about what's next. And so let me just briefly update you on the status of the project and what you've all accomplished. You know you've accomplished Phase One. The city of McMinnville, in fact, contributed over time some $3.2 million from a local standpoint to move that project forward. Those local dollars were in fact critical to moving the project forward, and without which, it wouldn't have gone forward on Phase One. Phase One came in on time, under budget. Phase One came in on time, under budget, the money, some 29, 28 or 9 million dollars of savings from Project One, a significant part of which was the McMinnville money and your partners, was then voted upon by your prior counselors to be invested in Phase Two, which is from the end, at the far end, at 219, to continue on and connect the bypass up to 99W at Rex Hill. As to that part of the project, what I can tell you is, is that the project is in design. David Evans and Associates, a private engineering firm, is doing the design work on it. They anticipate that work will be done by about December. They are going to have it designed to a 50% level. They don't finish that design under ODOT's policies until they have the funding to build it, but 50% is a long ways towards construction. There's also money that's been used, and there is right-of-way being acquired, most of the right-of-way for Phase Two has been acquired, and ODOT tells us that they've got about a $50 million investment now in Phase Two. In fact, Travis Brower, who is right under the director, and I work continually, Travis is in charge of ODOT's project funding, and what he will tell you is, is that, you know, with that kind of money spent on it, we've gotta finish Phase Two. It's not if, it's when. That's an incredible step forward, a thing that we can all celebrate and feel good about, but, you know, ultimately feeling really good about it's gonna be when you can drive all the way up to Rex Hill. So with respect to that, it's about money for construction, and that's about how do you put a package together? And I want to talk to you about the momentum that we have now achieved in moving Phase Two forward to fund it and to build it, and how the city of McMinnville and your partners and, and others can be a significant factor in moving that along and making sure that it gets done as quickly as we can. So when you look at what's happening on Phase Two funding, about three months ago, Congresswoman Bonamici and her colleagues were given them $20 million for each of their districts as an appropriation, this is what you always heard about as an earmark, that could be used to move a project forward. And after long and serious conversations with the Congresswoman, and with her incredible commitment to this project, and her willingness to, to step out there and say, I think we can put it together, and I can tell you that those of us involved in it have assured her, we will find the rest of the money so that her money will be well spent. She authorized eight of her 20 million for this project. That money was then moved forward, it was approved by Congressman DeFazio's committee, as you know, Congressman DeFazio from Southern Oregon is the Chair of the House Surface Transportation Committee, incredibly important role. His committee approved it, and then the House voted and approved that, that 8 million dollars, step one. Senators Wyden and Merkley then came through with another 2 million that they said that they would put forward, actually it was more until the Senate adopted a rule that limited it to, to 2 million. So that would get you to 10 million. Those dollars, it became incredibly important in our conversations with the Oregon Legislature. Governor Brown included in her budget, $32 million for the bypass. And after long negotiations, and with incredibly good job from many of the people, including Mayor Hill and other members of the city of McMinnville, and, and a lot of others, in testimony before the legislature, the legislature approved $32 million more for Phase Two construction. Now, that was critically made possible by the first 8 and 2 million dollars, it all starts to come together. And just recently, ODOT has another pool of money, that, uh, some of which is dedicated to rural projects, and the Transportation Commission asked for recommendations from our area commissions on transportation. Mayor Hill is critically important, remember that, as is, as is Commissioner Kula, members of the Confederated Tribe, and I can tell you that Mayor Hill and others did a masterful job of turning around no money in the MWA recommendation to a recommendation from the Mid-Blamette Area Commission for 10 million more dollars for construction. So you start to put that together, and you've got 8 million from Bonamici, you've got 2 million from the senators, you've got another 10 million here, and you've got $32 million from the legislature, and, you know, we're talking a lot of money, 50-plus million dollars, that becomes critical in terms of putting a package together for construction. On Phase Two, ODOT now has the money to do, and has a conceptual design for the interchange, for the connection of the bypass to Highway 219, that goes across the river, as you know, and on beyond, onto the bypass, and so that has got the money to, it is funded. And so in talking to the project manager today, uh, from ODOT, he said they anticipate having that 219 interchange done in 2024, and they're already starting to move forward on that. So that builds the momentum on Claudia working and moving forward on construction Phase Two. But then more importantly, we've also got, that's about 30 million, so that leaves us another 25 or 30 million for construction of the rest of Phase Two. And how does that become important? Because as you all know, there are all these different initiatives in Congress for large sums of money for infrastructure. The Senate just passed one. There are more coming down the road, and they're gonna take a local and a, and a match of money so that, to come up with the 75 to 100 million more than it's gonna take for construction. What you do have is, now we are on a good start for local money to match that and put up another 25 or 30 million. A critical component, just as it was in the construction of the first phase, is local dollars. You know, there is nothing that makes a bigger impact on people with a lot of money than to know that, that this is so important, that the local entities are there with their own dollars, as you were in the first phase. Those were critical then, and everything that ODOT and others tell us, and local, people in DC, of what are the local communities doing? So I'm not here tonight to ask you for a specific number of dollars, I just wanted to lay the stage of, we are at the, at the point where we have an incredible opportunity with the right funding package, and it, and we've got the trajectory and the momentum putting it together. If we can come up with some additional local dollars, and those dollars from the MWA recommended, we are well, well situated to go after a huge infra grant of perhaps of 100 million dollars and move Phase Two forward to get it built. Now, that's important for several reasons, we all want to see that built. We need to get that built so that we can go back next and build the piece from Dayton to Dundee, which is critically important to the tribe, it's critically important to this whole region, and certainly critically important to McMinnville. So, so it all starts to come together as a package. And so I would say to you, well, don't think about dollars yet, but I can tell you that the other two cities and the county all have, all have said, but we need to sit down and have a conversation about what we can do as a local match, and begin that conversation of what it would look like. And they're willing to sit at the table. And I can tell you that when you talk about what, what kind of strategies you might use for funding, because that, that would be my question if I were in your shoes, first one is, we know that you have committed that $3.2 million, and you're paying it out over a number of years, much like a, it's a borrowing from the straight Oregon Infrastructure Bank, you're paying it out of gas tax revenues, and the question is, is what could we do with that, that part of the strategy? In our conversations, and I've talked with Mayor Hill, and as with the people at ODOT, and we're convinced that you could restructure that debt, not increase the debt payments, but just restructure it, extend the term, remember, you've already paid some years on that, and if you added some years to it, you could, if the locals could all come up with some significant additional dollars, that it could be used for Phase Two. And let me be clear, that Mayor Hill may have told you, we're, we're really talking about Phase Two and Three. I don't think that any of you, or any of the other cities that I've talked to or the county, is in a mood to have three times a funding package. You've done one, one more is it, you put up the money that would go to both Phase Two and Three, and one of the ways you'd raise that for Phase Two would be to extend the debt, and then when you get out to the point that you're ready to do Phase Three, Dayton to Dundee, you would renegotiate those debt terms, and hopefully you could extend it out enough to, to come up with some, clearly with additional dollars for that part of the project to build it and to finish that. But that's probably not gonna be enough. So the question then is, is how could you come up with some additional dollars to move this incredibly important project forward? And one of them that, that I think all of us, and I've talked to the different mayors, and now the just, the two city councils, Newburgh-Dundee, and with the county commissioners, is we know that you're all getting American Rescue Plan dollars, ARPA dollars, and those dollars have a portion of it committed to infrastructure, transportation, et cetera. And the question would be, would each of the councils and would the commissioners and the tribe be willing to put in some of their ARPA dollars upfront in order to make a critically important contribution to that Phase Two now, and to work on it, and how important that would be to go forward to look for another, or a big infra grant from the federal government? So, so that would be one piece of it. The second piece then is, as we find out more about what the project's gonna cost for Phases Two and Three, would be to redefine, restructure the debt in an amount necessary to put up a proportionate amount of, of local dollars for construction of those two critical phases. So, so those are all factors that could move this project forward in a critically important way. Now, you know, the good news, and why I'm optimistic is, is that we're actually in a position where a lot of the, once you start getting these critically first dollars, other dollars are coming, and how do we build on that package, such as a local match now, could make a huge difference, could make a big difference in getting a large grant, and perhaps moving this project forward much sooner than we'd ever hoped, particularly on Phase Two. So that's, that's where we are. I want to tell you that every year that, you know, you approve in your annual budget money for lobbying for the Newburgh-Dundee bypass, it may be one of the few projects that anybody's ever put together of this magnitude, 600 million dollars, where you don't have a professional staff hired to put this all together, you don't have secretaries, you don't have, uh, all kinds of people that are working on the organizational part of it. The only money we spend for local dollars to do this project is the money you spend for lobbying. And each year, the city of McMinnville puts that up, as does Yamhill County, Newburgh-Dundee, both the Newburgh and McMinnville chambers, uh, two or three different, through this pact this last year, three private entities, and we put about a $150,000 package together for funding for lobbyists, for some of the strategies. What you've got out of that $150,000 is the $32 million from the Oregon Legislature, 8 million from Suzanne Bonamici's office, and 2 million from the senators, 42 million dollars, and I would tell you that that's an incredible return on that investment. And, and I would also tell you, being right in the mix of all that, it wouldn't have happened without all of our support and committee, and Mayor Hill, and, and many others, but it also wouldn't have happened without our professional lobbyists that were critically important in getting that money. And so, you know, once again, we're gonna be looking at how they can help us put that package together in Washington DC. And so really, what I'm suggesting to you tonight is not to approve anything, but just a, a nod of the head, that it's important enough that, that the mayor and, that Mr. Towery be authorized to meet with the mayors and the city managers of Newburgh and Dundee with the, with Commissioner Kula and the manager of the county, and somebody from the tribe, and myself, and sit down and say, what do we think about these funding strategies in terms of debt extension and ARPA dollars? And if we can all come together with a recommendation and come back to all of the councils and the commission, and then you will have an opportunity to say, here's what it really looks like in terms of dollars. But, you know, we're all in this together, and we need to come together with the united front, we can't have one city doing other, nothing, another one doing X, and another one doing X plus Y. So that is the same spirit of cooperation that put together Phase One, I think it'll work on Phase Two. And so that's what we'd like to do, and, and I've talked to Mayor Hill about helping me set up that kind of a, of a forum, subject to you all conferring that we need to continue that kind of a conversation and see what we can develop for local funding, and I'm done with that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dave, for that presentation. And so at this point, I think it, you know, I've been giving periodic updates as to the good work that's been going on, but we're getting to a critical phase, as Dave indicates, that, uh, local dollars, we, we don't need to give them right now, but we need to have an indication that we are going to participate in the local match, and then we've come up with a strategy that, once we do that, then it's going to be restructuring debt so that we wouldn't be putting additional money, we'd just be having that stream of payments going for a longer period of time. So I'd open it up to council to, uh, ask any questions further of Dave. Kelly, go ahead.
Good evening, Dave. Dave, thank you for your explanation, I have some questions.
Please.
I, I was always under the impression we were only going to do this one more time, but I had the impression from you, it sounds like two refinancings in this whole situation.
Well, Kelly, there would be two refinancings, and that, but we would know in advance that it would be a refinancing of the phases, as to, for a part of the money we would put into Phase Two, and then we would again restructure that for a part of the money for Phase Three. But when we sit down as a group and meet, what we're gonna talk about is, what's the total number of dollars that, that the locals are willing to put out, and it's gonna be for Phase Two and Three? But we wouldn't owe the dollars on Phase Three until that's ready to go to construction, and that's when we would then have the second half of this one refacing or funding project, we would then restructure to put in the second half of the money, which is all part of one funding strategy for the whole thing. We just don't need the money until you get ready for Phase Three construction.
Any money until Phase Three, or just, we're gonna be putting up money for Phase Two too? Because my understanding was, we probably wouldn't be putting up any money except for Phase Three, which benefits us.
No, I think we would, the money would go for Phases Two and Three, I think we're all in Phase Two and Three. Remember, we're asking Newburgh and Dundee to put money in up, as a part of their restructuring would go to Phase Three.
Yeah, I know that.
So, Kelly, just from a standpoint, is what we're looking at is a different way of doing it. We're not gonna be putting up as much cash for Phase Two as we were going to be looking at for Phase Two and Three. And so the structure that we're looking at is, you know, once we put some cash in, hopefully from ARPA dollars, that those, uh, the only other dollars we're going to be doing are going to be the restructuring and pushing them out over a longer period of time. So in reality, it is, we're looking at, we're looking at a local match once, but it's going to be, in that it's gonna be over a 10-year period or longer, we'll do it in incremental phases. Go ahead.
And the ARPA dollar part of it, I also find a little bit questionable. I, I asked Jennifer today, when she sent out the list of, uh, possible things to spend ARPA dollars on, why the bypass wasn't listed as one of the possible recipients, and she seemed to feel that this would not be something that would fall into the ARPA category.
Well, our indication is, it, it does, uh, but again, we've not had that conversation till we are talking to you guys, and so that's why the, Dave's in front of you tonight is to talk about that, so that we could move forward in the budget discussions with ARPA dollars.
Okay, finally, there's the certain equity on how this would be divvied up. I was not happy with the way it was divvied up last time, and it had a certain logic to it, and I honestly talked to all the counselors at that time when I was council president, and told them, I thought it was a good thing. And obviously, my husband was commuting, so I thought it was a really good thing. But, you know, I think McMinnville paid more than either Dundee, or, well, both Dundee and Newburgh, so I guess I just have a little kind of uncertain feeling about how this is gonna be divvied up for the city of McMinnville and for the rest of the county, who also benefits from it.
So, let me just address that one quickly, Councilor Menke. First of all, you know, it wouldn't make real good sense to go out and extend the debt so long right up front that we would fund both Two and Three, Phases Two and Three, when we can wait to fund Three our proportionate share later, and we'll get more benefit from that, because we'll have had a chance to pay down some of the earlier debt. But with respect to the other issue, uh, you know, one of the things this committee's gonna do is sit down and talk about proportionate contributions and benefits, and so, you know, anything of being raised is on the table in terms of part of that conversation, let me just assure you of that.
Okay, well, those are my questions, thank you.
Um, Councilor Peralta, and then, uh, Councilor Chenoweth?
Thank you, Mayor. Dave, thank you for your work on bypass, and for all of your service to the community in the various capacities that you've, uh, been engaged. I really think all of us owe you a tremendous debt of gratitude. I just wanted to say, Mayor, I, I had a similar concern with respect to the use of the ARPA funds for, uh, this project. My read of the description seemed to indicate that they were, were not intended for road maintenance, and that perhaps that was because the Congress is contemplating, uh, additional funding. funding for road type projects. So I definitely appreciated Dave's perspective that this might help us line up some of the monies from that second round of funding. But my initial perspective is one of skepticism on that portion of it. I am, however, very much in favor of the idea of, of re-amortizing the period or changing the amortization period for the note and extending that out to increase, you know, to allow us to fund Phases Two and Three. And I had a similar concern with Kelly. I felt that the first round of Newburgh-Dundee bypass funding, we did pay a somewhat larger share relative to the benefit that McMinnville got on that first round. So I'd hope to see more equity in, in future rounds, at least for our folks, while acknowledging that these second and third rounds are going to benefit us more directly than the first one did. So, those are just a few thoughts. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just respond to one point.
Go ahead, Dave.
Counselor Peralta, you know, the money we're getting from the state of Oregon, the 32 million is ARPA dollars, let's just make that clear. But the second one is, is that as a part of my conversation with Yamal County, and I've talked to the mayors and I've talked to Commissioner Kula and then with the members of the commission, and that is the concern that we have seven other smaller communities in Yamal County who have some level of benefit, some more than others, from the project, and they've not been contributors. We can talk all we want about whether they would or how much or what it would be, but I think more importantly, and I've talked to, to Mary Hill at length about this and with Commissioner Kula, and we've talked to the ministers, and that is that the county, in addition to whatever share it would come up with, or nationality based upon some formula, Commissioner Menke, that the county would in addition, put up additional dollars, significant additional dollars on behalf of those seven other cities as some contribution to recognize the benefits that they've gotten that haven't been paid for from them directly. So, just so, we're all troubled about that.
Did that answer your question, Sal?
It, it did, thank you.
Thank you. Chris, go ahead.
I just, I'm curious, thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious, what are we looking at in terms of hopeful dollars out of this from the City of McMinnville and from the cities combined?
Mr. Mayor, you want me to take that back?
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
So, what I know is, is that we're going to be putting dollars in upfront, and that's one of the good things about ARPA dollars, we could put those in as a, to help prime that pump on that federal level. ODOT has their own theories about what we ought to come up with with respect to Phases Two and Three. And I've steadfastly not gone into a conversation about, any discussion about how much that might be. That's not my job, and it's, that's a job that would come from a conversation with all of the entities. And just because ODOT thinks that's an appropriate match, doesn't mean that's what either the cities think is an appropriate match and/or what the cities feel like you could fund, and assuming, depending on the, the assistance of the Confederate tribe. However, let me just say, when it comes to the next phase, Phase Two, for example, and the engineers are designing that, and right now, ODOT has an estimated cost for Phase Two. Well, as a part of that estimated cost for the construction, they've got a 40% construction contingency. So if the project, if you said it's going to cost $100 million to build, that includes a 40% contingency for overrun. So if you didn't need but 10% of that, it's, this isn't exactly the math, but it would be 70 million. Well, why would we want to enter into a conversation now about putting up a proportional amount for Phase Two like we did on Phase One, when we don't even have a clue how much it's going to be? And I don't like to go out and start saying, we'll put up money, when I'm, I'm convinced that it won't be that much. So, so we have steadfastly not gotten drawn into, how many dollars should we put in? And, you know, once you start talking about it, you put it on the table, it's going to be in the newspaper, the other sides hear about it, it makes that conversation more difficult. So, what, what we're saying is, if we have this conversation with our local mayors and managers and commissioners, and come up with dollars for Phase One, and we leave that question of how much we're going to do for Phases, the phase to the finish, if you will, divided between Phases Two and Three, until we are much better informed on what it's really going to cost. And then we'll have a conversation about what is an appropriate amount for McMinnville or Dundee or Newburgh or the others to put into that. So, if you ask me, I've heard all kinds of numbers, Commissioner Chenoweth, or Counselor Chenoweth, I, I just don't want to get dragged into a conversation when I think anything we do would be more money than we ultimately ought to put in.
Understood. I, I get where you're coming from. And I wasn't here for round one, but I would like to echo that if, particularly since I've already heard Tu say that we were, maybe we put in a, a larger portion comparative to our benefit, that I, I would, I would echo the sentiment. I don't want to see that happening on any future rounds.
Any other questions for Dave? Hearing none, I think what, why we've come before the council this evening is to get your, your go-ahead for us to go in and, and collectively talk to our partners. Again, no commitments will be made, but we've got to have that ability to have a conversation with our partners across the broad spectrum and kind of see where we're at. And so, Dave, that's what you're looking for as a chair of the bypass committee, is for us to be able to move forward with further conversations with our partners. But we needed the go-ahead from this council to say that's something that you would give us the ability to go in and have those conversations.
And that group will not make any commitments. It would go back to all the jurisdictions for, for collective responses to what this group would think would be, as a group, an appropriate approach to local funding.
So is there anyone on the council that is opposed to letting us move forward in that discussion process with no commitment, but just to collectively start talking with our partners?
I'd be up for collectively chatting about it, but definitely no commitment. So we see some numbers.
Thank you, Counselor Garvin. Anyone else have any negative approaches to that?
The, the only caveat that I have is just to kind of restate that I'm more skeptical of, of allocating ARPA funds than I am of, of re-amortizing the, the existing debt.
Right. And, and Sal, we would not go into that till we get legal direction on that, but at, at least initially, we've gotten, we've gotten some indication that that's a direction we can go. And, and we've already had all of the other partners talking about that. But again, if we can't use that, we can't use that. But the information we're getting from the federal government and from our, from our lobbyists would indicate that that is a possibility.
And I appreciate that, Mayor. And just to be, to be clear, I, I have the first question of can we, and the second question of should we?
Should we.
And, and so, I just want to lay that out. That's not a no, it just means that I'd like to see a clear benefit. You know, I mean, if you're talking about a, a big, huge multiplier for federal dollars or this gets us lined up much quicker, I, I can be more flexible, but initially, I'm very skeptical of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kelly?
Well, I like the concept of restructuring debt, but, yeah, I, I think you can go ahead and talk. I just don't want any commitments at this point.
Great. Anyone else like to weigh in on it? Seeing no hands then. Dave, I think we have an answer that we can move forward without commitment, but get into the discussion and come back and have a healthy discussion with our council at some later date.
Thank you very much. That's all I ask.
Thank you, Dave, for being able to join with us eve, this evening. And again, I think you've heard many of our counselors share how appreciative that you, they are of your hard work and your vision to, to get our transportation in the Mid-Wilamette Valley to a point where it can help us economically grow and get product to market. So thank you.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, I know that, you know, as counselors, you sit here, you get criticized for just about everything. This is one project where you can truly celebrate what you've accomplished, and when you drive on it, nobody has to explain it. And you can celebrate the opportunity of where you've positioned yourself to do something for a long-term benefit. So, it couldn't have happened with any one person. This has been an army of hundreds and thousands. And so, I just want to extend my appreciation for the incredible cooperation of everybody that's made this happen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, thank you for that discussion. That takes us to item number six this evening, which is a joint McMinnville City Council and McMinnville Budget Committee meeting. We've had many members of our budget committee on the line. And so, what I will do at this point is call the joint meeting of the city council and the budget committee to order, and we will do a roll call. So Claudia, go ahead and do a roll call.
Committee member Haas?
Committee member Hart?
Here.
Counselor Geary?
Here.
Committee member Hofstadter?
Here.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Present.
Committee member Seiler?
Here.
Com, Counselor, Counselor Peralta?
Here.
Committee member Phoenix?
Here.
Counselor Minkie? Committee member Harmon Ferry? Council President Drapkin?
Here.
Committee member Maxfield?
Here.
And Mayor Hill?
Here. Thank you, Claudia, for taking the roll call. This evening, we're getting back together and we have a pretty aggressive schedule as we're working through the budget process this year, more transparency, more input from the budget committee members as we heard in meetings up to this point. And tonight, we will continue our discussion on resources and sustainable city services. And this is a continuation from our July 27th meeting. And so we'll turn it over to, to Jennifer, our finance director, to reintroduce the topic. She has a memo, a part of our packet tonight where she's restated. So Jennifer, welcome and thank you for getting the information out to us and the survey that we've done and the, the beginnings of some good discussion tonight. Welcome.
Yeah, thanks. Pleased to be here with everyone. So, we do have an aggressive agenda, a lot that we would like to get done in an hour or so. So I'm going to share my screen and just show you what we've got on tap here. So can you, can you see the, the screen, the 8:10 joint council meeting?
Yes, Jennifer.
So, we're going to try something different and try to bracket ourselves kind of with time allotments. So we've got four things we're hoping to cover in this hour. And the first will be an update on core services, 10 or 15 minutes with Jeff. And then we'll get into, I'll go over the results from the survey, just highlight them for about five minutes. And then we want to spend the bulk of the time together discussing the results and coming to a decision on which revenue sources you do want staff to do research into and bring back to you. Then I do have the last five minutes, I hope we'll have time, to just show you the, the few updates to the American Rescue Plan investment criteria, principles that we have put together so that hopefully we can finalize those as well for that part of the project. So, I will stop the share and turn it over to Jeff unless, are there any questions or concerns about what we're doing tonight?
If you don't mind, really quickly, I just wanted to say something that we talked about in preparation for this meeting, which is that when we get into this discussion period, and this is, you know, for our counselors and, and budget committee members, if you'll notice the time that's been blocked out for that, and then take into consideration how many voices there are to hear in the room, and that we don't want to force a situation where people have to try to say everything they want to say and then pass the conch, so to speak. So if we could all just be mindful of how much time we're taking and who hasn't had an, an opportunity to lend their voice to the conversation, to make sure everybody has a chance to get heard, that would be wonderful.
Thank you, Council President Drapkin. Okay, so I think, Jeff, you want to, to kind of set the tone a bit?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the budget committee. I'll give you a brief overview of the work that the executive team has done so far to move the core services analysis forward. We're going to talk about when you will see final product, and that final product is subject to your review and consideration as a policy body for certain, and we'll share with you tonight kind of the tool in which you'll be presented that information. And I'm assuming, Jennifer, you've got a slide or two for that when we get to that part of the conversation, right? Or is it in your memo? I forgot. You're muted, Jennifer.
Sorry, I will share my screen so that you can see the core services template when you're ready for that, Jeff. Just let me know.
So the executive team has gotten together twice in about the last four weeks for a full-day workshop, each time with kind of homework in between and afterwards. We started with the product that was incorporated into the budget that you reviewed and adopted for the current fiscal year, the list of core services. We worked to agree on sort of the, the level of description that we would incorporate into a document. Some of the core services were pretty granular, some of them were really high-level, and so we've, we've tried to strike a balance so that there's enough information for you to understand the basics of what makes up the core service. And then we reflected back on a tool that was used about four years ago in a sort of a priority effort, not a prioritization effort, but a description of sort of where we stood and where we aspired to be if we felt like we needed to see a higher level of service. And so that, that template is sort of the key product that we're going to talk to you about tonight. So Jennifer, if you could go ahead and put that up, and I can walk the group through So, what we did is created this, we've already gone through the work of identifying individual department, high priority, medium, high priority, medium, and medium-low priority services. What we will share with you on, at your meeting on September 22nd, is a full list of all of the services that we have identified. There'll be a brief narrative in the left-hand column that we have entitled here, but it's essentially the service description. We will describe what the service would look like if it's below base level, base level, mid-level, and optimal. We will show you where we think those services are right now, and where, from a staff perspective, we would recommend that you move to over some, you know, over time. And we would describe both the staff, not both, we'd describe the service, order of magnitude, budget impact, and service impact of each of those categories, below base, base, mid-level, and optimal. And so it will be a lot of information. It will be presented to you in a staff report prior to that September 22nd meeting, so you've got time to read through it and digest it. And we expect that it will be a useful document for you as you try to craft the, the gap that we want to fill and how to describe the services that would be supported by any new revenues that you choose to move forward as a body. So with that introduction, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have and either reflect on them or bring back an answer at a later time.
So any questions of Jeff from council or the committee? Please just raise your hand. Kelly?
Jeff, I know you folks have met several times, so could you just give
So could you just give us maybe kind of a simple example of how this would look, please?
We have one that's, you have ready, that's sort of close to ready for primetime, Jennifer. The other thing that we might actually be able to pull up, I didn't see Jenny on the call and I know that Susan is out. We actually use this template to sort of describe the MacPAC process and the primary components of the building. And we could use that as an example, maybe if Zach has that handy. I don't, do you have that handy, Zach? No, he shared it at the last MacPAC meeting. I don't think I have.
I can, I can in a few minutes. I'll pull that up.
Let's do that. Sorry to put you on the spot, Zach. I should have anticipated that.
I, Jeff, if you'd like, I've got the draft park and rec one. It's not the MacPAC one.
Okay, let's just go ahead and pull that up so that everybody can see what it will look like. And so with the understanding that this is draft and hasn't been reviewed by the full team. So here's an example, indoor recreation and aquatics. And there's a description of what would constitute a below base level. There's a description of the kind of programming that we would identify. And then as you move across the matrix, you'd see a description of base level, the changes that you would recognize between below base and base, same for mid-level and then with optimal level. And this actually picks up some of the information from MacPAC, actually. The highlighted column is where we think we are with that service right now. And so for a different service, you might see a base or mid or even an optimal level highlighted. So that's how you would distinguish where we feel like we are with a particular service right now. And then as you scroll down, you'd see indoor senior programs, description of below base. We think right now we're at the base level and what that means. Again, at this point, you have the narrative descriptions, but not necessarily the dollars or staffing impact. So that's why this is draft. Park planning, again, description of each of the four categories and where we think we are. Volunteer coordinations, another example. So just as you scroll through it, you see it's going to be a lot of narrative. We will be incorporating, again, the sort of order of magnitude budget impact as well as staffing impact where it's appropriate for a given program. So that's the kind of information we're expecting to provide to you.
Thank you, Jeff. That really helps a lot.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions of Jeff from members of the committee? Just raise your hand.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, Zach.
Thank you. Jeff, I've had, as you alluded to, and have a little bit of a running head start in my MacPAC time of looking at that that you had sent out. And so it's beginning to make a little bit more sense. The problem I have translating that is, how does it, from a decision policymaking perspective, on the city's core services as a whole, how do we take departmentally? And I kind of had this question at the budget level. How do we, how do we look at each department's research on their core services and break down therein departmentally? And look at it outside of each siloed approach of departments and look at it as a citywide, whereas we may say, you know, a bulk of this department we find is under this department's medium service? And how do we start prioritizing all of those as a whole?
So that is, that's exactly the right question. That's the hardest work to do, quite frankly. But when, Jennifer, if you could show that first screen, you'll see the additional information that we have here are the four sort of core tiles of core services that we described in the budget. And we will actually, at the executive team level, shuffle all that stuff together. So you won't see all the parks and rec stuff together. You will see the parks and rec stuff scattered across this template where there are high priority, medium, high priority, medium priority, and medium low priority services. And we, as an executive team, are going to work to sort of intersperse, to shuffle those together in the sort of the priority that we see as an executive team. And so we will take the first crack at shuffling together all of the high priority services and all the medium, high priority services. And that may or may not resonate with you, but it will be a starting point for the policy conversation.
And to help in that, will there be dollars associated with sort of, to get to there requires this investment?
Yes, yeah, we're going to work to identify those order of magnitude dollars as best we can.
Thank you.
And it looks like Kelly has a question, Mayor.
Go ahead, Kelly.
I'm sorry. On the low priority ones, are we actually going to look at those as something we might consider not doing?
Yeah, we'll have some programs where we suggest to you, maybe this is a time to make a decision about whether or not we provide a particular service or set up services.
Okay, well, that'll be very interesting. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I guess a little, if I may, Mr. Mayor. That threw up one real quick. On that vein of looking at all our existing services and deciding what we do or don't and at what level, what about things that we don't currently do that won't show up, but that we may want to do? I'm thinking also perhaps the Kahoots program we heard of just a little bit ago or other programs we don't currently offer that we might want to look at ways in which we could offer that service if we find it of value.
Right, so there are a number of programs and services that we have talked about. Most often in the context of the strategic plan that don't currently have resources directed towards them or fairly limited resources, or we've just now started talking about it. And so we will describe those kinds of things for you as well.
Okay, last call for questions of Jeff. Seeing none, then we'll go back over to Jennifer.
Well, great. I think we're, we're pretty close to the 15-minute time on that. So yay, good job. So I'm going to, on the, just reviewing the results, really five minutes, a terse, terse description of what you've seen. So let's see here. So this is, these are the results that I sent out. There were 34 items. And what I've got colored in green are any revenue resource options that on the survey got 50% or more in the categories of support or strongly support. The items, the reason why a handful of them are in this kind of hashtag green is those are the lowest ones. Those are the ones that were between the 50 and 60%. So if that's, you know, meaningful for anyone in terms of making choices about what to move forward. So I've kind of grouped them in what came, these are items that are 50% or more. So two of them are property tax related, this getting, studying special districts, which is, you know, associated with the fire department. Fire services is, you know, a discussion that's been ongoing the last couple of years. And also to dig into what local option levies might look like in our context. I also pulled the ones that just, my sense is, are the ones that have the greatest potential to raise large dollars and perhaps not necessarily for general fund, but that'll be part of the research we do. But that's looking at utility consumption tax, utility service fees, a service fee for the city, and then corporate income tax or business tax. Then there were this other smattering of options with over 50. But I, my sense is these, well, I have no idea what a luxury tax might entail. Maybe that's a biggie. But the others are probably smaller kind of revenue generation. But that's what we would look into, a business license, a heavy vehicle fee, the luxury tax, a rental car tax, a construction excise tax, improvement districts, and a hazard substance user fee. And then the final kind of group of items are digging into what we're doing now and are we doing them well and optimally? And those would include our system development charges, our franchise fees, cost recovery generally for user and service fees, and the transient room tax. And then the final item is looking at a tool that has been used in the past, but we didn't use it this budget cycle, is looking at opportunities for internal financing for capital investments. So that's the end of just kind of my summary of what the results say. Any questions on that before we go into a discussion, Q and A, that portion of our time together?
So again, looking under resources, any questions for Jennifer? And in that we have things up, if I don't call on you, just call out to me and we'll recognize you. I don't see any hands at this point.
Okay, great. Well, I will stop the share screen and we can launch into discussion. I am hopeful that we will be able to get a decision made as to which items staff should begin to study. Because the next step, maybe to also put this in context, the idea is to bring forward to you also in mid or late September, at the 9/22 meeting, the same meeting Jeff was discussing, we'd bring back some core services information, is to bring back the research that we've done and have, have a discussion about what you might want to pursue actually in the real world. So.
Counselor President Drapkin has a question, Jennifer.
No, I'm sorry. I thought we were moving into discussion. I'm holding my questions for discussion. Thank you.
Okay, and Jeff, do you have your hand up? You're muted.
One thing that I would have hoped was obvious, but particularly for the public record, as we used, we used sort of arch language about strongly support, support opposed, strongly opposed, clearly not at a decision point for implementation. We, we hope we weren't, we weren't intending to ask you, would you vote to implement this now? Or would you vote to not implement this now? This is really how much support do you have for moving forward with the study and analysis? And we hope that that was clear to you, but sort of in reflection about the language, it may not have been as clear as we had hoped. So we're not presuming that something that has strong support right now would definitely move forward and be implemented by the body. Like, just like we wouldn't presume something that has opposition now wouldn't be considered at some point in the future. We're going to do some analysis, bring that information forward to you in the context of the services that would perform, that it would support. You may find the right mix of services that you want to support and revenue that you'd like to implement. You may find that you want to see more options reviewed or different options analyzed. And we will, you know, that will be, this will all be iterative work from our perspective, but we just wanted at the sort of the first time through to cut the number down a bit, a bit so that we can do a quality job of providing you some information that will further your discussion, but not bind you to a decision. So with that, I will mute myself again. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, for that clarification.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that.
So again, what we're looking at is now discussion based so that we can give some direction to Jennifer. So Remy, we are to the discussion area. Do you have a, just a thought that you'd like to throw out?
Yeah, I just have some initial thoughts on some of those slides. I'm trying to get the lighting here. So I have some concerns regarding utility consumption tax and utility service fee. And of course, because we didn't have detailed information, some of this is based off of, you know, very crude understandings of how these taxes would be applied. But my concern with both of those, or how these revenues would be applied, my concern with both of those is that they would disproportionately affect low-income residents of the city of McMinnville. I know we've seen this in the past when we've been looking at sewer rates and especially when we had apartment buildings that were on one or just a few shared meters. And then the effect is that, you know, you've got 24 apartments or 40 apartments, but only a few meters. And therefore, a tax would, you know, would, it would show as though individuals were using it a higher rate when in fact that was a conglomerate. So I'd be interested in the long term, seeing how those two are applied. And also with the utility service fee, if we're talking about that as a hookup fee, you know, those can, that can afford to buy houses are more likely to be staying in those houses longer where others might be moving more frequency. In terms of a construction excise tax, I would just like to make a plea to the council to really seriously consider that and make that a priority. It's something we're discussing and have been discussing for years in McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission. And it's something that we have seen to be extremely successful in other communities, including our surrounding neighborhoods. In terms of the luxury tax, that is something where, I don't know, you get $75 and you get to pass go. I mean, I really don't understand a luxury tax. So that was, you know, I put that on mine as well, but without an in-depth understanding of what it means. I think a hazard substance tax aligns with our long-term goals of becoming more environmentally sustainable. And lastly, we are not at full cost recovery when it comes to permits, SDCs. And I know there is a lot of perspective of that that makes McMinnville unfriendly to business. And I say a lot of perspective, I mean, out in the community. I have heard that a lot. I also don't fully understand why our general fund should be subsidizing private investment. So that's it. Thanks.
Go ahead, Jeff.
So to one of Council President Drapkin's early comments about who pays, that will be something that is incorporated in the analysis for all of these revenue choices. So, so it's not just how much money it might, a fee or a tax or a revenue source might generate, but it's who pays it, under what circumstances, how much would it raise? What's the legal construct? How would it be implemented? How quickly could it be implemented? So it'll be a pretty robust description of each revenue source. And the who pays and who doesn't pay is going to be a key component of that from our estimation.
Thanks for that clarification, Jeff. Other comments from members of the budget committee? Kelly?
I'm just going to put this out there because, I don't know, I thought it was interesting, the top five revenue makers. I was just thinking maybe it'd be, since we really are seriously dealing with a high necessity of revenue, if we could just figure that we're going to get an analysis on the top five, I would really appreciate it.
Thank you. Other comments? Go ahead, Meredith.
Is there a goal for the number we're looking for? Is there a reason why we wouldn't want analysis on all the green and the like striped green ones? Or is that just too many?
I think from a, from a technical point of view, a staffing point of view, we, doing all of those, the 18 that showed up green, I think we have the capacity to look into all of them unless there are particular ones that you wouldn't want. So on that basis, I think it's fine to just go forward with those. You all can change the mix however you'd like. In terms of the number, I think that's, that's part of the discussion. Then there's not a fixed number. And so that's where really understanding the core services and what do we want to be offering? And then figuring out the dollar amount. So that also, kind of the scale of what kind of range different options might be able to generate would be part of what we would want to bring back to you in the McMinnville context.
And Jennifer, you know, after listening to Council President Drapkin and then Meredith's comment, if we do look at the green and the dotted green, having a little more... comment, if, if we do look at the green and the dotted green, having a, a little more definition around what that tax is, so that, you know, what is a luxury tax? What would that look like? You know, having a little more definition around that could help. Uh, Zach had his hand up, and then Sal has his up. Zach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I think I'd also like to go to Meredith's question about that g- goal, that target, what's the, what's the end one? Some of these decisions are hard for me, um, to make and understand without no- knowing how much money I'm saving up for, or, or how much revenue was the target goal. Um, and then I think I would also tend to agree with, with uh, Counselor Menke and those, I'm striving for the efficiency, what are those to- top five, um, that hit that sweet spot of highest revenue to, you know, shortest, easiest, quickest path for us to make an informed, good, sound, agreed-upon decision? Um, I guess both those to be s- are, are weighing on me as well as haste. I think, um, you know, we're three to four months away from cracking open the budget again, and we just furloughed a bunch of employees, and we were at a continuing, or that revenue shortfall's gonna grow another three percent, and we, I don't wanna be faced with the decision of not how many days people are gonna take off, but who is gonna keep their job and not. Um, I, I think I'm really, really wanting to, maybe, um, I'm, I'm worried we're gonna be too bogged down with seventeen options, I, I almost wonder if there's a hierarchy of ways we can push things, some things forward, that are, that are clearly with the one stroke able to get us the two, three, four million dollars, and then we, we have a values discussion about other things we wanna do. I, I believe, I believe, you know, in Counselor, uh, Council President Drabkin's ideas about the hazardous ways, I'm support, I'm supportive of that, construction excise tax. I don't know if those are huge revenue generators, or sort of things that we can align with other areas of the city, and we want, which we want to level those services or raise those services, in addition to filling our revenue shortfall and that two to three million staffing gap, and working on a bunch of those things over the course of time, but I'm just, I'm just trying to balance the haste I feel with heading into the prep for next year's budget, continuing to have a shortfall, and at least not, not at least having something in play for that. I'm worried our staff's gonna get burned out and overworked, and, and feel like we don't have an end in sight, so, um, I, I, I'd like to leave this meeting with more clear, smaller, concise direction, and we can come back with and, and be able to be making decisions on which ones we are going to enact and do, or go to public hearing on, in the next meeting too. Thank you.
Sal?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just a suggestion in terms of triaging, um, which uh, proposals to prioritize. Several of the taxes that I saw referenced, um, seem to have um, a very clear nexus to something that I would consider to be like an expansion of services. So for example, if we were to increase the um, the transient lodging tax, for example, that's very prescribed in terms of how we can spend that money, um, in terms of having to spend it on marketing. Or if we were to do a tax that uh, were a, a gas tax, for example, to fund roads, that's, that's another very kind of prescribed kind of tax that is limited, I believe, in terms of how we can spend it. And so I was gonna suggest that maybe in light of what Counselor Gary was suggesting, and I think others, if you center on some things that would get us to the general fund stabilization, and then with regard to taxes that have a more specialization to them, uh, then those could be discussed more in the, in the, in the context of adding programs. Um, because I, 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 and, and I guess I would also just say, uh, you know, and, and, and for example, in, in that category, I'd put the construction excise tax as something where we're expanding affordable housing, and so you apply a construction excise tax for that purpose. Um, the only other comment I'd make is, uh, I think Counselor Drabkin made some comments about uh, fees related to utility expenses, and I guess I'll just repeat the comment that I've made, uh, a few other times, uh, that Mark Davis had pointed out previously, um, the fact that the, the payment in lieu of taxes, uh, by the s- steel mill and air liquefied, I, I think that I'd really like to see staff focus on a rate review to see if, if we're consistent with other jurisdictions in terms of that fee, uh, or, or not, because that, you know, I, I think that that's about half the electricity used in this city, uh, and they get a substantially lower rate for that, so I just wanna see how competitive that is, as a kind of priority for helping us get back to zero. Thanks.
Thank you, Sal. Let's go to uh, Counselor Garvin, and then uh, Member Hart, and then uh, Council President Drabkin, and then uh, Allison. We'll go in that order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, great points, uh, Counselor Peralta and Gary. I kinda wanted to build on uh, Zach's comment of, you know, having too big of a list, it really bogged down the process, and I didn't know if uh, Jennifer, or maybe Jeff could identify some of these uh, ones on this list that are really net neutral and uh, or would take a lot of FTE time to, to implement and, and capture. So, I mean, I, I would definitely be in favor of narrowing this list down before we get out of this meeting and kinda have a more focused approach, so, um, it doesn't bog down staff and burn them out. And I share uh, Counselor Peralta's concern about the TLT and uh, gas tax, and, you know, the one thing I didn't see on there was marijuana tax, I didn't follow that, uh, measure all the way through, if that ended up passing, if that's even on the table or not, but.
It didn't pass, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, let's go to Jerry. Go ahead, Jerry.
Uh, thanks, Scott. I was just gonna make uh, some of the same points that Sal made, in that, uh, look at some of these that are in green, um, there's going to be limitations on where the money can go, and um, not all of them, I don't think, can go into just the general fund for, you know, to support general services, I think they'll have to go to, uh, for specific purposes. Uh, now, to the extent that if they go to a specific purpose, they could take some pressure off the general fund, uh, you know, there'd be some benefit to the general fund, so, um, that might be a way of looking at it as well. And, you know, as far as the survey, I just saw that this is primary, just a primary screening process, um, there were some, certainly some uh, revenue sources that I had never ever thought of or considered, and, and another thing that a- also entered my mind as I was answering the survey is that, um, the council in particular need to be aware of the public's reception of various taxes, uh, some will cause a backlash, uh, others won't, uh, well, all, all taxes will cause backlash to some extent, and the question is, uh, how do you balance the city's need for revenue versus, um, the backlash that will ensue as, as new revenue so- sources are proposed? And also have to explain to uh, uh, somebody on the street, uh, well, why don't, uh, well, why are we looking for new revenue sources? Why aren't we looking at cutting expenditures? I think that will be, um, something that will be very much in play. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Uh, let's go to, uh, Council President Drabkin. Remy?
Thank you, I just had a thought on the, I saw the TLT uh, tax come up on that list, and I didn't vote for it, because I re- recollect that we've already raised that to ten percent, and my recollection is that's the maximum allowed by the state? Um, no? Uh, that, that's my recollection, so that, I, I just wanted to throw that out there, and, and I, clearly I might need some clarity on that, thank you.
Thank you. Allison?
Uh, good evening, everyone. I just want to ask, uh, where I might get some additional information to help me evaluate some of these decisions? Um, when I, for example, look at, say, the utility consumption tax, when I looked at the example I saw in Eugene, it falls out about, you know, sixty percent residential, forty percent commercial. How in McMinnville would I know how that's going to fall out? And how would I know what the demographic, demographics of McMinnville are? So for example, you know, I don't know how, what the population of McMinnville is made up of, are they all senior citizens, or young professionals working? I mean, it does make a difference when you're trying to evaluate how this is going to impact the community. And for these, for example, I don't know how many registered businesses there are in McMinnville, could you all point me to information that might help me? Because I doubt when you evaluate these options, that's gonna be part of your, you know, recommendation. You're gonna come back saying, okay, we think this can raise so much revenue, and it'll fall out fifty-fifty on the residential and commer- uh, uh, and commercial, but I should know who that is.
Um, well, I guess, yeah, Allison, those are really important questions, and um, it is my intent to look at those things. I've been gathering demographic data, um, and they're in my file for, you know, once I get the go-ahead of what, um, what revenue sources, um, to look at, because I'm not an expert in these either. Um, I know a little bit about some of them, I, I don't know what a luxury tax really might look like, and so that's one of, that's what we will be bringing to you, um, that kind of information. So, um, so hopefully, hopefully we will, um, have that sort of, um, level of data to the extent that we're able to gather it, um, to bring back. So, Jeff?
So this is part of the true confessions, um, and, and totally wonky, geeky part of the show tonight, where I realized that a grad school class I took, um, almost thirty-five years ago, still applies, um, all these years later. Um, and it was an economics class, and the professor talked about what made a good tax or fee, and it was essentially three things, fairness or equity, elasticity, which means it grows with the, the economy, so you don't create this sort of structural gap that we're dealing with, and efficiency, which is how much effort does it take to gather the revenue? And so, we're, we're really gonna try to hit these marks, the kind of questions and discussion that you have for us tonight will, will identify for us the kind of information we need to bring to you, and we will do our best to do that in a way that, that fully informs the conversation. And again, if we get closer, we don't hit the mark, we expect you to say, wait a minute, I wanna see this broken down by, you know, the impact on, um, census tracts, or the income on particular neighborhoods, or the income on, or the, or the impact, not income, or the impact on, uh, people by income, and we will do our best to provide that information based on the demographics of McMinnville and what we know. But we will also, you know, we are also mindful of the fact that, uh, we're trying to do two things. One is to try to fill in historic gap, uh, and do it in a way that allows the, the, the costs and the revenues for the services provided by the community to grow over time and, and stay stable. Um, and we, uh, and we can tell in the conversations we've had with council and with this committee, and we look at the strategic plan, that there are things that we aspire to as a community, we're trying to build the capacity to get to some of those things too, and so we're gonna do our best, um, to provide it to you in big, sort of lumpy forms, so that we're not spending forty-five minutes talking about something that's gonna net fifteen thousand dollars over the course of the year. Um, so, the, the conversation I've heard tonight is really useful and really helpful for me, in terms of the kind of information that we're going to be pulling together and presenting to you, and just, I appreciate the approach that folks have taken.
Thank you, Jeff. Again, I'll ask for hands one more time in the discussion portion of this. Go ahead, Zach.
I'm, um, just trying to, you know, I get that we're sort of trying to pull, we're weaving together a heck of a quilt, and this is one, one big thread of it, um, as I wrap my head around how we make the recommendations for what to move forward with information on, I, I'm having a hard time, um, translating that page of resource option survey as it's laid out in the big long graph versus what seemed to be the more helpful slides that you put up. I don't know if everyone else has those, and I don't have them, or, or if we could see them again or something, I just, those, that was a much more efficient way to look at that versus all the green, this is red, and I'm colorblind, but, um, I, I, I think maybe, maybe using those as a, as a geyser, or putting them back up real quick so I could write them down, I didn't, I didn't.
Or, or, or exactly what we do, what we do is have Jennifer just send it out to the committee, those were her slides, and she could send that PowerPoint out to us, so we could have that.
Well, we, we can certainly pop that up. I mean, I think what, what Jennifer said is right, I think we feel like we can pull together, um, meaningful information on all sixteen or eighteen of those, um, revenue sources that were in green, and we can sort of prioritize our work based on some of the sort of large themes that we heard tonight. Likewise, if you'd like us to bring things to you in a couple of smaller lumps, um, we could, we could tackle them in, um, a different fashion, so with that, I'll let you reflect on these slides.
So, so maybe a suggestion, kind of taking, um, what I have heard from folks in the discussion, is maybe this review of existing revenues, that's kind of a group of things that, um, staff is at different levels of, you know, intent to already move forward, and there, and as, as you say, the transient room tax, I don't, I don't know the law, um, so maybe, we may be maxed out on that, and it's just a non-issue. So there may be some easy, if they stay on the list, we can bring back, um, pretty easy quick answers of, um, kind of whether or not these are meaningful in terms of moving the needle, um, with what we need to get accomplished. Um, again, also, some of these smaller ones, um, whether any of these by definition, um, need to be restricted, then that also is kind of, um, will, will quickly become apparent. Um, so, so we may end up really with, um, more significant research and examination on the, on the ones that, um, are definitely going to feed a general fund, you know, um, address the gap that we're seeing, um, and how they might play out in our community. So I see, um.
Sal, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Jennifer and Mayor. I, I guess I, just one general comment, I did wanna also just acknowledge to Jennifer and to Jeff, how much I really appreciate you bringing this to us in this fashion, I think it's really ambitious of you, um, and uh, it, it, I know that that's a lot of work on your part to kind of provide these choices, so I appreciate that. Um, in terms of, uh, reviewing, uh, existing fee structures, I guess the one place I would go, uh, just to reinforce what Counselor Drabkin said during her comments, is, you know, I have the sense that we're planning for a lot of growth as a community, and, and uh, obviously we put together that plan for growth, but I, I really feel like folks that live in the city, uh, really don't wanna see the, the town grow so much. And so I think that voters here are probably unlikely to want to subsidize a lot of the building costs that we have, and I know we've been looking at different cost recovery levels, I know for some of them we've sought a hundred percent cost recovery, but I would just throw that out there, that, that, uh, McMinnville's a great place to live, people don't wanna see it grow quickly, and I, I think that I feel probably more comfortable charging more of a premium for that kind of thing than, uh, maybe we have in the past, if we're looking for new revenue, so I just throw that out there.
Thank you, Sal. Okay, Jennifer, do you feel you've got enough direction? Uh, Kelly?
I'd like to support Sal in that particular one. I, I personally feel like eighteen things for you guys to look up on the furloughs, with furloughs and everything else seems like a lot to me. I, I was very interested in things that the staff was looking at, uh, like the SDCs and other things to increase some franchise fees. I don't know how much you can do with actually franchise fees at this point, I thought we were pretty much maxing on that. And then, what we need is a fair amount of money. And then what we need is a fair amount of money, and I don't want to go to the voters and say, this is going to, you know, we want to do this, this, and this, and have them go, oh, my God, no, we don't want to do that. You know, I think one or two fairly decisive things is about what we need to focus on. So that was why my thoughts on looking at the five main moneymakers would probably be a good way to go. And that's my explanation of it.
Thank you, Kelly. So I'll go back to Jennifer and see if you feel like you've got enough direction to move forward with getting ready for our next meeting.
I see Adams.
Adam, you made it.
Yeah, so I was kind of piggybacking on Kelly's comment about going for a certain amount of money. I mean, are we narrowing this list down, and we're not really going to explore these until we see how the fire districting goes and the potential for the funding we have there? Do we, as council, like to keep those funds, some or all of them? Or are we going to go for, are we making this list to go for revenue now and then potentially still keep that revenue? I was just curious when we, as council, are going to have that conversation.
Well, my sense, Adam, is you'll have that conversation near the end of this process, and it'll be informed by the consultant study that's coming to you at your next work session on the fire district. I mean, I think it all folds together ultimately, and so, again, each of these sort of incremental meetings are getting us closer to information that will allow you to make a decision, but I think ultimately, you have to try to make it at least together, or at least in the context of these other moving parts. You know, all that said, whether or not the fire department spins off into a separate fire district, you still have a structural imbalance because our revenues don't grow as fast as our expenses. You'll have a lower base in which to deal with that if the fire department is part of a district. You'll also have the reality that that new district is consuming part of the available taxes, the part of the available property taxes. And so the discussion about how much of the tax authority does the city retain is part of that discussion near the end of this three- or four-month process that we're, you know, about a month and a half into at this point. So I think you've identified sort of the challenging issues, but I don't think you can answer the questions before you have the information in your hands.
Okay, sounds great, Jeff. I just want to make sure that that is on the radar screen, that we are going to have that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, for that clarification. Okay, I will ask one more time, any further discussion from budget committee members? I think I'm getting a head shake from Jennifer and Jeff that I think we've got enough for the staff to move forward in preparing for our next meeting. So with that being said, I will go ahead, and I will now adjourn the joint city.
Oh, wait.
Go ahead.
We wanted to just show you the ARCA list real quick.
Okay, go ahead.
So this, this is the last item. So this is circling back to the original meeting we had on the 13th. Wow, it's been less than a month, and I think we've met four times on these subjects. You all are rocking it. So these were the small changes that were made in the investment criteria for the American Rescue Plan, and I wanted to find out whether we're good with these changes. And thank you so much to Debbie and Remy and others who gave specific suggestions on this. So having this in place will allow us to move forward on the analysis that we will do later on the American Rescue Plan projects that you may consider funding. So are folks good with it? There were only two items that had red line suggested changes.
All under the proposed principles.
Exactly. So these first two were where the changes were, and the rest stayed the same. So I see.
Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I have concerns with the first two. I mentioned them, and they were sent out in writing to everybody, and I still have those concerns. You know, the, if we're making decisions in which we're preferencing gender and skin color, that's actually in violation of federal and state law, and I don't really want to put us in that position. It also seems to me like both of those, in the way that they're worded, are making this into a political issue rather than just into a funding issue. So in both cases, I'm a little concerned about the wording, and I just want to make sure I put that on the record.
Any other comments?
Looks like Remy has her hand up, Mayor.
Go ahead, Remy.
Thank you. I know we can't get into the nitty-gritty of this. I do want to say that I do believe that that's a misconstruction of the reality here, though. And it's broadly acknowledged that there are historically marginalized communities, and that those communities have been systemically excluded. So I do believe that that's a misconception, and certainly, that's something that we'll be talking about through our work with DEIAC. But I didn't want to not bring that up, and to be specific, what I think is a misconception is that by identifying historically marginalized communities, that somehow there is a reverse, if you will, a reverse racist attempt in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Any other comments?
Yeah, just to respond to that, Mr. Mayor. I am not, thank you, I am not implying that there's a reverse racism there. I'm saying if you outright state you're going to preference based on gender and skin color, excuse me, you are actually violating federal law. That, this has nothing to do with racism. We can't make decisions or preference based on skin color or based on gender. That's just law.
Yeah, so if I may respond, I would love to hear from our city attorney on this about the law's perception of what constitutes discrimination and who are protected classes.
So let's go ahead to Amanda, and then after that, we'll go to Debbie.
Thank you, Mayor Hill, and I, Councilor Chenoweth and I have discussed this a little bit, so what I'm sharing with you all is also what I've shared with Councilor Chenoweth. For the principles, I don't see a constitutional issue since there's not any policy decisions that are being made, or funding decisions that are being made directly by those principles. There will definitely be legal review involved with any ARCA funds that are used to make sure that we are compliant with federal and state laws, and that includes these issues. So that will occur, and it has occurred with prior funding that the city has provided to businesses and other organizations throughout COVID.
Thank you, Amanda. Debbie, your hand's up?
Yes, I was just going to say, I wonder if we just needed to say, historically, helping historically marginalized, folks from historically marginalized communities, and not necessarily say a couple of specific examples, because there are many ways that folks may have been marginalized in the past. Could be skincare, could be skin color, could be gender, could be other things. Why do we just spell out two of them? So I wondered if Councilmember Chenoweth would be more comfortable if we struck the examples, but still just said historically marginalized communities.
I would be, thank you, Debbie. I mean, we've had, colleges have had programs where they have done exactly what this is saying, and they've been struck down by federal court. So we need to be cognizant that while we're just putting principles forward, what I hear Amanda saying is, when we actually go to apply it, if we apply it the way that that's stated, we're going to be setting ourselves up for a problem, and I don't want to be there. So.
Yeah, and just to piggyback to clarify further, basically, what federal case law has said is that if you give a point system preference, generally speaking, that's going to be unconstitutional unless you can show certain nexus exists. That doesn't prohibit the ability to identify different protected classes and take that into consideration, I'll say that.
Amanda, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying. What you initially said is there will be, you know, potentially a legal test on anything that we do. That doesn't necessarily mean that the legal test moves one direction or another, but what you're saying is that the cases that Chris was referencing earlier were cases where colleges were applying specific points to admission without tying that to some kind of specific rational basis. But we're not doing that here. What we're doing is simply articulating a statement of values that we apply to, you know, other policies. Is that about right?
Correct. I mean, the test isn't rational basis, but yes, you're, that's exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
So I think what we've had is Debbie gave the suggestion that we don't give the examples, but that we keep the language, historically marginalized populations, and strike the examples. What are people, what are people feeling?
Mr. Mayor, I've got my hand.
Go ahead, Zach.
Thank you, thank you. I would put my favor in how it's written as proposed in the packet with the red lines, and as it's written, I would support that.
Jerry has a thumbs up? It would be nice.
Yeah, my thumbs up was just, I would remove the specific examples. I don't think they add anything, and they don't really serve a point.
Jeff, should we, I mean, we want to zero in on this tonight and be done with this. Should we just do a simple vote, or?
You can do a straw poll if you'd like.
Okay. So what I think I will do, and this is of the budget committee members, those that would like to leave the proposed principles as they sit right at this particular time, please indicate. Okay, so it's as it's been presented, this is with the examples. Who's in favor of that? Okay, Zach, Sal, Allison, Kelly?
Remy, Meredith.
Okay.
Not sure if we got.
One, two, three, four.
Meredith. Thank you.
Five, six, seven, eight. Is that eight?
Think so.
Okay, and those that would like to take the examples out.
Need to clear the hands of some of the previous voters.
Right, I can, so we've got, okay, everybody's going all over the place. Okay, we've got Wendy, Jerry, Chris, we've got.
Peter.
We've got nine to eight, so as we sit right now.
I think it's eight to six.
Okay.
Yeah, there are only 14.
My math, okay? I'm only a banker. So eight to six would give, changing the language to not have the examples, is that correct, Jeff?
No, I think we had eight people supporting the language as it was presented tonight, and six wanting to change it, so.
So we will leave the document as it has been presented to us this evening. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Thanks so much for hanging in with that last decision, Sal.
Okay, with that, I will adjourn the joint city council and budget committee meetings and return to our regularly scheduled city council agenda. Thank you, budget committee members, and you're welcome to stay on, but we have more work to do. We're going to now move to advice and information, and so we will have reports from counselors on committee and board assignments. I know there's been a lot of, during the summer, a lot of cancellations, so I'll just start with Zach, and then Kelly will be next. Zach?
Thank you. Landscape review committee met on the 28th of July to review and approve a landscape plan on Alpha Drive and discuss advancing development code review. And in addition, we met the contracted planner that'll help us push through and navigate any landscape-related planning as we look to fill Jamie Fleckenstein's position, and she comes from the league, I believe, and she was fantastic and superb in both her writing and her presentation. So we've got good hands for as long as we need to be. MACPAC met last Thursday and reviewed costs and operating budgets and had good discussions around those. And then we heard and reviewed the finance subcommittee's report back, and then saw, as we alluded to, saw sort of a preview of sort of that core service lens in which we'll make some decisions on the recommendation we have, and decide where the current recommendation is, and maybe if we split off and have sort of a good, better, best level of recommendation for the MACPAC to finish, and how we want to stick the landing and put a bow on that, if we want to present that now and move that forward, or we want to buy us a little bit more time to review, for the council, buy MACPAC more time to have the council get through and make some progress on the revenue and budget standpoint discussion, because one of the main punchlines is the potential operating costs of the facility are looking at exceeding our current ability to do that. And so there's some sequencing catch-up here. So that's about all I've got for my committee assignments. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Let's go to Kelly.
I really don't have anything to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Let's go to Sal.
Sorry, Mayor, I was having problems with my mute button. No report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Adam?
No real indus report tonight. Our YCOM meeting for August got moved to August 17th from 1:00 to 3:00, which is normal on a Thursday every month. So if you're lucky, join me at YCOM, let me know, and I'll get you a SIM link. And so then now we got fire districts coming up Monday, so support of seeing you guys all on special night.
Thank you, Adam. Let's go to Chris.
I have nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you. Remy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission, as I previously noted, we are progress, moving forward the idea of a construction excise tax. We also heard reports on how community land trust and land banking work for the city of McMinnville, and we are reviewing SDC exemptions for affordable housing and looking at a city center housing strategy. And when it comes to that, we are reviewing some specific things that we know are barriers to affordable housing, including density and parking requirements and locations. We also had reports, update reports from our supportive agencies.
We also had reports, update reports from our supportive agencies, including YCAP, the Housing Authority of Yamhill County, and Encompass Yamhill Valley. And, and we also heard from task force members about discussion regarding ARPA funds and turtle dove shelters. And then our next DEIAC meeting is in two days, and that will, meeting will be hosted on Zoom, and all are welcome to attend, thank you.
Thank you, Remy, I have nothing to report, so let's move over to department heads, we'll start with Amanda.
Thank you Mayor, nothing to report tonight.
Rich?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I just want to give you a follow up to the email that I sent concerning our COVID outbreak at the fire department. We had no further positives within the organization. We have, two of our employees have returned to work that did test positive. We currently have five out, and I just wanted to bring to the attention of the council the outstanding job that the members of our department did to help continue maintaining services for the organ, for the community, and stepping up to fill positions that were vacated by the seven individuals, or six individuals that were out due to our COVID issues within the organization. And that we're, with two back, we have scheduled two more back here in the next two days. Unfortunately, we have one person who is not doing as well as the rest and is currently in the hospital, and our prayers go out to him and his family at this time.
Take that back to the team, Rich, how much we appreciate all they're doing.
Thanks sir.
Okay. Jennifer?
Um, nothing to report that you all haven't already heard about, we've been busy, but you know all about it.
Yep, thank you. Kylie?
Good evening, just a quick update on the city's COVID response. As, you know, you read in Chief Lightford's email, we did have the outbreak at the fire department, and cases have been going up in our area. As such, the city implemented a mask policy. We had had one prior, it went away, it's back now. As we get more information about what's going on, we are pivoting and changing our strategy. So currently, we do have a mask mandate, Governor Brown did issue a statement today that that is likely coming tomorrow in a press conference statewide, so stay tuned on that. I don't have real accurate information about the percentage of employees who've received a COVID vaccine. We've been tracking that data, but it's not been something that has been mandated for our staff, so some employees have just chosen to not disclose. As we keep observing what's going on in the community with COVID, we may change our path once again, so just stay tuned on that, and as department heads, we'll try to keep the council informed of what we're doing. But for right now, expect to see staff masked up at all times when they're indoors or in vehicles with other employees. And again, you know, keep our employee who's struggling with this right now, any your thoughts? Thank you.
Thank you Kylie. Let's go to Jenny, Jenny?
Thank you Mayor, I have nothing to report tonight.
And we'd just like to thank the library for being one of the cooling stations in the coming days, I see that you're on the list, and again, you're always a welcoming location for those in need, so thank you.
Happy to do so.
Okay, I think what I'll do is I'll go and have our report on the crime response unit, and then we'll come back to Jeff and have him finish out our reports. So Captain, you, we've got the memo from the chief in front of us, so go ahead and update us if you would, Tim, thanks.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, I'll try not to take too much of your time, I'll direct your attention to the memo that was created by Sergeant Desmond and Captain Jasco related to the crime response unit. That was, started July 7th of this year, it started out with two of the members, Corporal Eckroth and Officer Brenner. Starting on that date, since then, Officers Meyer, Hoffer, and Rediger have joined the team as of August 4th. Part of the mission of the crime response unit is to address citizen reports on traffic complaints, and to conduct focused traffic enforcement, reduce neighborhood complaints about the livability issues arising from camping by locating, conducting contacts, and constantly enforcing the prohibited camping ordinance. Following up with citizen crime reports and business crime reports to reduce the patrol division call load, conduct focused self-initiated field activities to address known repeated offenders and nuisance residences, assist patrol with follow up on cases that require additional resources, and set up and conduct surveillance of locations identified as being associated with previous burglaries, trespassing, thefts, and other criminal activities. They also are charged with conducting follow up and attempting to identify suspects in cases that involve repeated criminal activity, including car crimes, motor vehicle thefts, and business residential burglaries and thefts, enforcement criminal, enforcing criminal violations of domestic violence, no contact orders, restraining orders, stalking orders, court and prohibited probationary contacts. In the report that was generated, there are the statistical numbers that were compiled for those types of events, including the traffic complaints, the prohibited camping ordinance enforcement, surveillance, crime preventions, and self-initiated field activity. In all, there were 22 arrests, 11 traffic citations, 26 traffic warnings, and 44 cases that were either taken as new and/or follow up. Also attached to the report are some of the correspondence that were received by the crime response unit from citizens that came in in various different formats, some were via email, some were through dispatch, some were through social media outreach, and along with that is also some of the responses that, that they provided back to the citizens who made the complaints, as well as some of the items that were taken off the street, and some of the areas that, that they had direct impact on, specifically the 11th and Alpine area where there were a large amount of RVs that had been stored, and people were essentially living out of them from time to time, and that has since been cleaned up.
Thank you Captain, I think I'll open this up just for any questions that councilors might have of the captain, we're hearing citizen, it's a tooth, it's a tooth edged sword a little bit, you're hearing from a certain group that are concerned, and you're hearing from citizens that appreciate having their concerns looked in by the department. So I'll just open up, anyone from the council have any questions for the captain? Hearing none, thank you Tim for the report, and the good work that's happening. Let's go to Jeff, Jeff, your report?
Nothing else for tonight Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. That takes us then to our consent agenda, and so, is there anyone that would like to take the item off the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion?
I move the passage of the consent agenda as-
Second.
It's been moved by Sal and seconded by Kelly, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed by saying nay? Consent agenda passes six to zero this evening. We have one resolution this evening, and that's Resolution 2021-48, a resolution providing for certain increases to the fire department's fee schedule that allows the fire department to recover costs for fire and EMS services allowed within city ordinances, and the international fire code as adopted by the state of Oregon. So Chief Libber, we'll turn it over to you to lead us in a discussion.
Mr. Mayor and councilors, annually, usually in June, I have an oversight on my part, I bring a revised fee schedule for our ambulance schedules to include a CPI increase for the costs associated with providing ambulance service. This year, we're asking for a 1.75% based on the year end CPI from, from last year, which would equate to about a $25,000 increase in expected revenue on the ambulance fund for the fees for service. So we're suggesting council adopt Resolution 2021, recommending council adopt Resolution 2021-48.
Thank you Chief, any questions of Chief? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2021-48.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Sal and seconded by Chris, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed signify by saying nay? Resolution 2021-48 passes unanimously this evening. We had a city council executive session on the agenda, but Chief Skiles is unable to be with us through the whole council tonight, so the executive session is canceled for tonight, and will be rescheduled at a future date. With that being said, we will go ahead and adjourn the city council meeting at 9:32 this evening. Thank you for your participation. Thanks everyone.